Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 10, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please sit here when the City Clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz. Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil. Councilmember Manke. Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alkabra.
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Zornz, Councilmember Manke, who are absent and excused, and Councilmember McNeil, who I believe is running late.
Thank you, City Clerk. We've got a quorum. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to public engagement opportunities. All right, we have Arbor Day celebration. We are Tree City USA. Help plant trees and shrubs at Pioneer Cemetery on Saturday, October 21, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. There's a comp plan open house where you can provide feedback, participate in activities, and help shape Bothell's future on October 26 at Skyview Middle School from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And trick-or-treat on Main Street. You can enjoy 40-plus candy stops in downtown Bothell on Halloween night from 5:00 to 7:00, and you can see me there. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is defined by the U.S. Department of Justice as a pattern of abusive behavior in any relationship that is used by one partner to gain or maintain power and control over another partner and made up more than 45% of all crimes against people in 2022. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month was launched nationwide in October 1987 as a way to connect and unite individuals and organizations working on domestic violence issues with much progress made to support victims and survivors, to hold abusers accountable, and to create and update legislation to further these goals. And whereas domestic violence is an epidemic which can affect individuals of any community regardless of age, economic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality, and is exacerbated by societal and cultural factors like racism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, and other forms of discrimination which help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. And whereas preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice of individuals, families, community organizations, and institutions, each of which is uniquely situated to transform our communities. And whereas the City of Bothell reaffirms its commitment to providing support to victims of domestic violence through the municipal court and the Bothell City Attorney's Office Domestic Violence Unit and by connecting community members to advocacy and support organizations locally and nationally. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Bothell and join with others across Washington and the nation in supporting survivors of domestic violence as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies who are committed to increasing public awareness and sending a clear message that domestic violence is not tolerated in Bothell. City Clerk, do we have somebody here to accept?
We do, Your Honor. Emma Titterness is here online to join us. And we also have a couple that just joined us that will also speak to the proclamation.
Fantastic.
Emma, go ahead if you're ready.
Awesome, thank you so much. Thank you for having me here today and for recognizing the impact of domestic violence in all of our communities. Domestic violence is something that often happens in silence. It is secretive. It's something that survivors hide from the people they're close to because they feel shame or because they are committed to their relationship and want it to work. The way that we solve that is by making resources available to them when they are ready to take those resources. Through Domestic Violence Services, we offer legal advocacy for survivors in need of protection orders or referrals for different family law concerns. We also offer elder abuse advocacy for survivors who are 16 and older who have additional concerns that may be preventing them from leaving their relationship. We offer community resource navigation for people who need a little bit more assistance escaping that situation. For survivors who are not ready to leave or who have left and are dealing with the emotional fallout, we have multiple support groups via Zoom. They are incredible. We also have a 24-hour support line for people in need of safety planning, referrals to different agencies or different parts of our agency, and people who maybe at 2:00 a.m. just need to talk to somebody about what's going on. We also have emergency confidential shelter for survivors who are fleeing intimate partner violence. And we serve survivors of all genders and all identities. If you or anyone you know is in need of assistance, please call our 24-hour line at 425-252-2873. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Thompson, we also have, and I hope I say your names right, Chalika Dugar and Kunjan Kapoor here. If you'd like to go to the podium and say a few words, you're welcome to.
This is yours. Thank you.
We've never done this before. We do a lot of crisis work for our organization. Indian American Community Services is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that has been serving the community for the last 37 years. And crisis care was not a wing that was available for these years. It was born during the pandemic as more and more people within the community started breaking the tradition of silence and also started fighting the taboo and the stigma attached to it. And since then, the two of us have been partners in this crime in busting the myths of when to report, and it's okay to report, even if you think it's late. And we work with the cities, with the Commissioner of Police in different cities, with Bellevue, Issaquah, Redmond, Sammamish, Kent, and so forth. And I pass this over to Kunjan.
Hi, I'm Kunjan Kapoor. I work as Legal Services Coordinator with Indian American Community Services. So right now, we are handling around 75 women in our support group. We provide mental health therapies. We conduct legal clinics every week with the family law attorneys as well as immigration, because immigration and family law goes hand in hand. As we cater immigrants from India. And their biggest challenge is that they're on a dependent visa. So it is very difficult for them to come out of that abusive relationship because of their dependency on their spouses. So we take care of their U-visa and T-visa, and we see which visa they fall into. We conduct group sessions, mental health sessions biweekly over Zoom with a mental health therapist, Asian mental health therapist who understands our nuances very well. So the clients are very comfortable talking to her and exchange whatever is coming in their minds. And we provide one-on-one therapies as well, free of cost. Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right, next up, we have a community report for PSE Electrification Pilot Presentation. City Manager?
Thank you so much, Mayor. And just to echo, thank you to Emma for joining us online. And then Chalika and Kunjan, thank you so much for being here tonight. Saying that it's your first time presenting to the council, you nailed it. So really appreciate it. Mayor, we have a few reports on. We're going to start with a community report, as you mentioned, from Puget Sound Energy. And just for some context, last month, PSE launched a targeted electrification pilot program for up to 10,000 households who are currently on natural gas, who are interested in transitioning to electronic technologies for both space conditioning, heating, cooling, as well as water heating. And this is, again, something that has a nexus to some of the environmental goals within council priorities. And we just wanted to get some information out to the community about this opportunity. So with us tonight, we have both Julian Low and Mark Lesson from Puget Sound Energy. And I'm going to turn it over to them to present. And they're available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Really appreciate this opportunity. I'm Julian Low, Local Government Affairs Manager for Puget Sound Energy. I cover Bothell. PSE is a proud employer in Bothell. We have several hundred employees in Bothell. And we are grateful for the partnership and this opportunity to talk about our targeted electrification pilot. PSE aspires to be a beyond net zero company. We aspire to do this in three main ways. One is with our power supply to be carbon neutral by 2030 and carbon-free by 2045. Second is a 30% reduction in emissions from our natural gas system by 2030. And then finally, working with industry businesses and residents to reduce emissions from other sectors like the transportation sector. And so I've been joined by my colleague, Mark, who will go into more details about this pilot. And we'd be happy to take some questions. Thank you. Mark?
We cannot.
Someone took care of me. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay, Mark Lesson, Puget Sound Energy. As Julian mentioned, I'm in our Energy Efficiency Group. And I kind of own the targeted electrification pilot, which was already introduced. So what that pilot is intended to do is covering several different channels of deployment. So the first one is home electrification assessments. So we have a new vendor that we brought on board to perform those. So that's onsite. Someone comes to your home, does an audit, looks at your systems and your home to look at where efficiency improvements could be made, where a heat pump or heat pump water heater might be appropriate. And that's available to all PSE Gas customers. So if you're a PSE Gas customer, you can sign up for that service. We are also offering new rebates, which we have not offered before, for heat pumps in place of a gas furnace. So customers that have a gas furnace today, and they may have an air conditioner as well, they can get a new heat pump to replace the gas furnace, and we have rebates for that. So that's new, and that's under this pilot as well. That's available to our dual-fuel customers because in the pilot, what we're trying to do is better understand the dynamics between energy use when people switch away from a gas furnace and onto electric heat pump. And finally, one of the more general focus of the pilot is just general education and awareness. Some of the main things we're trying to do is help people understand some of the incentives and programs that are available primarily through the federal, the Inflation Reduction Act. But there's also some state-level activity on this front as well for heat pumps. And so we'll be helping to inform customers throughout our service area around what those opportunities are to help pay for all these, what tend to be very expensive projects on your home that people maybe aren't prepared or weren't thinking that they have a price tag as they do today. We also have a small carve-out in the pilot to target on some low-income homes. So we have a low-income weatherization program today. And what that program doesn't do is convert people from gas to electric. So we did hold back some budget for aligning that program with that program to provide some incentives for homes that we would have done weatherization and repair and other types of work, but then funding a heat pump and a heat pump water heater if they're so inclined. So pilot dollars will be used for that as well. Let's see. And I think that's, I think that was the main point I wanted to make. And then we can do questions. I also saw that letter that was sent in, so I can maybe talk about that real quick before questions. Julian, do you think?
No, Mark, I think that's okay.
Okay.
Counsel, questions? Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation and for sharing these updates with us. Could you explain a little bit more about who's included in the pilot and when this might be expanded to people outside the pilot?
Good question. So right now, if you're a PSE Gas customer, you can get the free home electrification assessment, very similar to our previous home energy audit program. So if you're a gas customer, you can qualify for that. If you're a dual-fuel customer, so you have both our electric and gas service, you can qualify for the heat pump rebates today. Those ones are focused on converting someone from a gas furnace to a heat pump. We have had for dozens of years, if you're a PSE electric customer and you have like an electric forced air furnace, we've had incentives for you to convert to a heat pump as well that's outside of this pilot but still available. And as far as broader, we'll call electrification work, that's still a work in progress with our, basically on policy and the regulators as far as how we do that. There may be some funding that will be targeted, kind of similar to the Inflation Reduction Act incentives, where low-income or prioritized communities may be the primary focus of any programs in the very short term. So there's some questions around, once the pilot ends in June, what are you going to do? We don't have funding lined up yet for that, but something may happen between now and next June where we can continue those rebates instead of ending them at the end of the pilot. And then those would be available to any PSE Gas customer, not just the dual-fuel customers.
Great. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
All right, I don't see anybody else, but I just want to say that I really appreciate this effort from PSE. I've noticed before that there have only been the heat pump rebates for people that are already on electric, and I have natural gas heat. And I have very much wanted a heat pump, so I will be signing up for this personally. And also, just I'm excited to hear about your initiatives to reduce natural gas overall and this being a part of it. So just thank you for that, and thank you for coming tonight. Go ahead, Julian.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. We will not be able to succeed in meeting our climate goals without the partnerships with our local jurisdictions. And so I think if there's one ask I have tonight, it's to be able to take the information that I've shared with Kyle and you all. Please place that in your newsletters. Please share information about them through your channels, especially to your residents that are very interested in climate issues. Second is, we look forward to partnering on a variety of other issues. I've shared with Kyle some additional information about transportation electrification. I know that was discussed at a recent council meeting, whether that's for customers in our business or resident communities in Bothell or even the City of Bothell and its municipal operations. So look forward to a lot more partnership moving forward. And thank you again so much for this opportunity tonight to present.
Thank you for coming.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right. Back to you, City Manager.
All right, thank you, Counsel. We have two staff briefings tonight, and both of them are schedule and context-related. So the first one is a briefing on the Bothell Way Northeast Multi-Model Improvements Project. This is one that we discussed quite a year ago. Had some exciting news about federal money to go towards this project. These are also the size and scope of projects that take a long time. And so Public Works staff had asked to do a quick update for council months before any actions might be coming to council, but just to, again, not to add a long communication gap, because I know there's a lot of people who are excited about this one. So joining us tonight is with a new title, so I want to highlight that, is Supervising Capital Project Engineer Rita Hu, who's joining us online. And Rita, hopefully you have everything you need, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Rita Hu, and I'm the Supervising Capital Project Engineer with Public Works Department. My apology for not being able to attend this meeting in person. Tonight, I will present to you the Bothell Way Northeast Multi-Model Improvements Project. There is no council action required today as this is an informational briefing to update you the progress of the project and itemize the next steps regarding the near-term council action. For tonight's briefing, I will start with the background information of the Bothell Way Multi-Model Project. I will provide you with the project description and also the public engagements that we have conducted or plan to conduct. I will go over the estimated project cost, funding estimate, funding status with you, as well as the project timeline. I will also talk about the challenges that the project has encountered as well as the mitigation strategy we have in mind or we have been doing. Lastly, I will itemize the next steps of the project. Bothell Way is a very important north-south connection between Snohomish and King Counties. It links Kenyon Park to downtown Bothell and Yudop Bothell and many area communities. This map shows downtown Bothell and Kenyon Park and how this project will improve the connection between them. As you may already know, Bothell Way between Reader in downtown Bothell and 240th Street Southeast is often congested during morning and afternoon peak hours because this section narrows to two to three lanes. As a result, the traffic backs up and causes delay. So this project is set to improve Bothell Way between Reader Way and 240th Street Southeast. And the goals of the project are to increase capacity of the roadway to reduce congestion and travel time as well as provide a safer connection for walking, biking, rolling, as well as using transit. So we are still early in the design process, and here are the examples of the typical cross-section of the Bothell Way project. Generals begin from Reader Way to 242nd Street Southeast. This project will provide managed access by providing two general-purpose land in each direction with a strip or raised median in the center. On the west side of the Bothell Way, there will be a sidewalk with a planter or a garrel with fence. On the east side, there will be a planter with a garrel with fence, a two-way bike lane, as well as a sidewalk. Public engagement. So in early 2022, the project team conducted two community workshops virtually. They were recorded and are still available on the City of Bothell project page. Last September, CD also hosted an online open house to update public on project status. Two weeks from today, Community Transit will be hosting an online outreach for Swift Green Light Extension. CD staff will be participating in the meeting to address any Bothell Way project-related question. Our project team also anticipates hosting a second open house in spring 2024 when the 30% desire is ready. So based on the latest current estimate, the total project cost is about $88.5 million. This revised cost is the result of staff working to find ways to reduce overall project costs. For the funding status, at this point of time, the secure funds, including federal, state, and local funds for this project, is above $52 million. You probably have realized that there is a budget shortfall of around $37 million to complete this project. Staff has been working to reduce project costs by considering different desire alternates as well as identify funding opportunities which could potentially fill the funding gap. This table here show our anticipated timeline for each key milestone from design to project completion. And if everything goes per planned, the project would be constructed in two stages and completed in 2029 and 2031 respectively. Of course, this project has encountered quite a few challenges, and we are working through them. The first big challenges is the increase of the project cost. The current estimated project total is much higher than what was originally anticipated. It is due to recent high inflation as well as complex site condition such as existence of the steep slope, wetlands, streams, and fish habitat. So in terms of mitigation plan, the current estimate of $88.5 million actually is the result of the staff working to find ways to reduce project costs in tendence with identify potential new funding sources. The other big challenge is a potential project delay. The project has received a couple of federal funding which triggers endangered species act. As part of the environmental NIPR approval process, according to WashDaw, the review process requires a formal consultation with services such as Fish and Wildlife Service and National Marine Fisheries Service. And the process could take up to two to three years to complete. As the service responsible for the consultation is currently understaffed and cannot really handle the volume of the review requests. As for our mitigation plan, CD staff has been in communication with WashDaw, who is working to help reduce the large backlog of the consultation in the queue. In addition, CD staff will be meeting with the service agencies and continue to advocate for the project's timing needs. Once again, there is no council action required tonight. However, staff will return to council to request council approval on the following documents. One, the Design Contract Amendment, which will be needed in late this year or early next year. Two, Race Grant Agreement. CD has received a $90 million race grant as part of the $52 million of the secure fund. So the race grant agreement needs to be approved by council when it is ready to be signed. Three, Right-of-Way Plan and Right-of-Way Condemnation Ordinance. The documents are expected to be ready for approval by council in about 18 to 24 months. Lastly, I'm hoping to come back for more grant agreements if successful for your approval. This is the end of my presentation. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Counsel, questions? Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rita, for this presentation. I'm wondering if you can speak to, and I don't know if you can, what some of the strategies you might be pursuing to make up that funding shortfall. And I guess one in particular that came to mind was, you mentioned that there would be wetlands and streams impacted along the right of way in that area. And is there any, like, Department of Ecology or opportunities available to help kind of protect some of the sensitive areas that are in that area while we work on this project?
Yes, that's the plan. So we are, we plan to meet with the agency and like I say, advocate. You know, we will talk about, discuss the cost and timing with them and we will try to advocate for the city on this project.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I'm not sure what part of design this question comes in at, so I apologize if I'm just way too early. But talking about SWIFT, you know, we usually see SWIFT with sort of dedicated bus lanes in a lot of municipalities. So I'm wondering at what point it will be determined if the new lanes will be bus lanes versus general traffic lanes?
Okay, to my knowledge, there would be no designated bus lane for this corridor. So in early 2018, we actually did some study and traffic modeling. And the goal of this project is basically to increase the capacity of the roadway. If we decide to provide designated bus lane, then we are not able to increase the, increase the capacity of the travel by just having one general-purpose lane in one direction. So that's one, so that's one reason. And also the second, the second reason, we have been in communication with Community Transit and we share the information, the design information with them. And currently, they are in agreement with us with no designated bus lanes in this corridor.
Okay, it's good to hear that Community Transit is on board. That might be a pun, but I really appreciate it. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm going to add a little bit more to that. So one of the things when we did that traffic modeling study is, and I've talked to you guys about this before, picturing, you know, traffic like water in a pipe system. So if we put only two lanes there for general-purpose traffic, essentially what it does is shift traffic into our arterials on through the neighborhoods like 104th and 88th. And that's not something that we wanted to do. The other thing is, we had to make a call back in 2018 when we applied for the first federal grant. And what they do is ask you to define a scope of work. So the scope of work was for two travel lanes in each direction. We made sure with SWIFT that that was sufficient to bring them down into a downtown in Utahtl Bothell. At this point, if we tried to readdress the scope, it is likely that we wouldn't get the grants that we have already gotten. We'd have to start all over again. So unfortunately, that decision was made upfront in 2018 when we did that analysis.
I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
I'll go. The, I would be keenly interested in knowing what the status of that is now. Where'd Steve go? There he is. I was just, I was trying to, I was trying, just trying to make eye contact with you. I mean, obviously, like from what you said, you said, you know, it's likely. It didn't seem super concrete. How would we find that out for sure?
I think I'm probably being too nice. I should be stronger. We won't be able to change the scope. So the process of a lot of these grants, all these grants, especially the federal ones, they're competitive. And you get scored by a committee or you get scored in the race grant by your staff. And they depend on your description of your scope on scoring it. In 2018, and it hasn't actually changed much yet, multimodal projects score well. But multimodal means you're also addressing vehicular traffic. So if we don't address vehicular traffic by putting bus-only lanes, the score would change on that project. Therefore, we would, we're essentially changing the project. And they can't really address that because there are a number of projects that have competed. And like we say, top X amount gets funding. Everybody else doesn't. So they're not willing to readdress changing your scope of work. It has to be very minor in order for that to occur.
Interesting. Even if we're doing something that would make the project more climate-friendly, more resilient, all the good things that bus lanes do?
Again, the scoring is set up for multimodal. And the way the scoring in that original one and many of the follow-up grants were capacity plus bikes plus Peds. If you don't have the vehicle capacity, then you're not going to score those points. Even if you bring transit down. Transit is another element you get scored well in. And we were able to score well in all four of those categories.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that's disappointing, but it sounds like reality. I just, the other thing I wanted to call out is that I really loved seeing the bike lanes on the other side of the landscape barrier. Thank you for that, whoever did that. I appreciate that very much. Councilmember McNeil, Deputy Mayor, you guys have anything? Are we good? All right. I think we're good. Thank you. Next up?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think as, as things continue to move forward and there, we get further along in the design too, I think some of the things we can address is in that partnership with Community Transit. If there are any features that they're looking for, again, they've agreed to, if they've agreed to not having dedicated bus lanes, there might be other things that can be done to prioritize bus travel. So we'll be cognizant of that and reporting back on any, any of those design features in the future conversations as well. Moving on to the second staff briefing, again, a schedule update, but one that's a lot more near term is a middle housing comprehensive plan and zoning code regulation status update. We're going to be joined here tonight by Community Development Director Jason Greenspan to walk us through. Essentially, this is, we have a number of activities coming forward before the end of the year, as councils were. And as by way of background, the, the city takes on an annual docket of comprehensive plan amendments. And we have two up for consideration this year. One is related to middle housing and the other is the downtown transition affordable housing overlay. So Jason's update will be putting some of the pieces in context, schedule, and in the packet within the memo, there's also a table that you can refer to of basically what the rest of the year looks like in terms of, there's several touches on both of these topics to bring it home and again, come to a conclusion before the end of the year, which is what, what's required and what we're aiming for. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Jason and he'll be available to give you a quick update and answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor Thompson, City Council members. Thanks for this opportunity to brief you on the status of updating our comprehensive plan and zoning code regulations as they relate to middle housing. If you recall, back in July of this year, staff indicated that the middle housing topic would be revisited this fall. And here we are, this fall, using the broader lens of the city council's 2023 comprehensive plan docket, which was approved in March of this year by the city council. Staff is working to follow a specific timeline to help you complete the deliberation process by the end of this year. And this is going to include discussions, potential actions by the Planning Commission and City Council in November and December, as you see in the table included in your packet, and I believe it's on page 11. So some quick background. Over the past year, we've heard about and discussed the importance of expanding middle housing types throughout our residential districts. We've conducted a range of public engagement efforts and activities, including walking tours, a pretty well-attended community workshop, and an online survey. The city council conducted a public hearing on July 11th, and that was to gather feedback on two very specific matters. Number one, potentially updating the text of the current comprehensive plan to reduce barriers and include policies about middle housing. And number two, to update the zoning code, which is how the city regulates location and density of housing. This July hearing was especially timely because House Bills 1110 and 1337 were signed into state law a mere two months before that. And that requires, both those bills require us to affirmatively tackle middle housing and local policies and regulations. Now regarding the comprehensive plan amendments, if you recall, these were to revise policies and text aiming to increase middle housing options in areas that have traditionally been dedicated to detached, single-family housing. Revised text was prepared using an equity lens and it envisions a range of moderate-density housing types like two-to-four unit buildings and structures, ADUs, cottage and courtyard housing. Along with these policy-related amendments in the comprehensive plan, staff also prepares specific zoning code amendments with the Planning Commission that would change how we regulate residential land uses and increase permitted densities on individual lots. The revised zoning code would increase the density of permitted housing types, such as allowing two dwelling units per lot minimum and up to four dwelling units per lot within walking distance of transit stops or when an affordable unit is proposed anywhere in the city. All proposed comprehensive plan and zoning code amendments were prepared by staff to be consistent with newly adopted state laws and to reflect key middle housing code amendment recommendations made by the Planning Commission a year ago this month, actually. Staff clarified that certain changes to the Planning Commission's code recommendations were made to achieve the greatest degree of consistency possible with new state law. And these changes included ensuring that all existing and new residential lots could include middle housing, adjusted permitted residential densities, and we deferred affordable housing incentives to a future date. We are still awaiting formal guidance from the Department of Commerce on how to implement middle housing consistent with HB 1110 and 1337, as well as a model code. The state is obligated to provide this information to us within the next three months, by January 24, 2024, specifically under HB 1110. So, moving forward, it's important to take this as a step-by-step process that is shown in the table that I referred to. Know that the city can only amend the comprehensive plan once per year under most circumstances and all matters on your annual docket need to be considered concurrently in order to understand their cumulative effects. Now, there's one other matter on your 2023 comprehensive plan docket that is still being finalized. It is not related to middle housing. It is the application by the Druze to add approximately one acre piece of land that they own to the downtown transition affordable housing overlay, which we kind of colloquially, colloquially refer to as the Tahoe. As I mentioned a few weeks ago when I was here, staff is finalizing the required concurrency evaluation of traffic impacts on roadways. And I expect the Planning Commission to consider the updated staff analysis very soon at an upcoming meeting. This is going to allow staff, with senior planner Dave Boyd as our lead, to present the Druze's request for a comprehensive plan amendment to the city council at the November 14th study session. In addition to the comprehensive plan amendment, there are also requested zoning map and code changes by the Druze that will also be discussed on that date. Once this study session is complete on November 14th, we're hoping a public hearing on the Druze's comprehensive plan and code amendments can be scheduled for December 5th. Now, once that hearing on the Tahoe concludes on December 5th, the city council will have completed all of the necessary steps to do three things. Number one, first, consider and take action on the 2023 comprehensive plan docket as a cumulative whole. Both middle housing text amendments and the Druze's de Tahoe district boundary change, which is technically part of the comprehensive plan. This is a required step in December and the next two are optional in 2023. Number two, on December 12th, the council could consider and potentially take action on code amendments requested by the Druze that would apply to the larger downtown transition affordable housing overlay district. And number three, finally, on December 12th, the council could consider and potentially take action on middle housing zoning code amendments that were part of the July meeting. And I just want to note, HB 1110 allows time for cities to adopt middle housing zoning code amendments six months after our comprehensive plan 2024 update. I don't anticipate that we would need to wait that long, but we are still awaiting guidance from the Department of Commerce. And we are expecting that model code and guidance by the, by January, as I mentioned. And staff has been participating on a technical advisory committee set up by Commerce. We're hopeful that they're going to clarify our compliance options and address some of the outstanding issues that we had identified back in July, like subdivision plats, how we address that and how we address some of the affordability incentives. So that gets us to the end of 2023. Now, on a related matter, next week, we're going to be here for a study session to discuss the larger 2024 comprehensive plan. And that's going to be through the lens of the periodic update, focusing on growth, land use, and housing issues. Starting with the 2024 update, the State's Growth Management Act now requires cities like Bothell to accommodate housing for all economic segments. About 75% of Bothell's future housing growth targets for the next 20 years through 2044 or over 9,000 housing units are allocated to the 0% to 80% area median income range. So how are we going to meet that target? We're going to need to incentivize affordability. We visit density limits and even further expand permitted housing types to demonstrate that we have capacity to meet housing targets across all income ranges. This is especially the case since nearly 60% of the city's land area is currently identified as low-density. Thank you for your patience as we navigate some pretty complicated policy and regulatory waters. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Aldrich?
I really do appreciate this, this presentation, especially this table that you've put in your briefing because it does clarify and streamline just what it is we're talking about. There are multiple processes that are happening kind of simultaneously. And to visually separate them out, I, I find that very helpful and I think the public may find that helpful as well. Recognizing that there are, there's a lot of moving parts here, like you said. So I, I really appreciate the update. I appreciate the visuals, the, just kind of the clarity that you're offering. And wow, yeah, 75% of future housing needs are going to be affordable, needing to be affordable. I don't know if I'm surprised by that, but it just shows the kind of scale, the, how momentous the work is ahead of us. And so I'm, I'm grateful that, that you're here and helping us reach those goals. So thanks for this. I really appreciate it.
I would mention that we're certainly not alone. The regional targets when it comes to housing affordability are shared amongst all King County cities, Snohomish County cities. So perhaps we're on a little bit of the higher end when it comes to that income range, but we're certainly not the only city that has to deal with a regional issue.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the briefing. I think HB 1220 slid under a lot of people's radar for a little while, passing a couple of years ago. And I'm really appreciative to see how we're going to tackle it, just that preview. So, thank you.
I'll go. Yeah, I want to echo what Councilmember Dodd said. I had no idea what the impact of that would be when it passed. But it has proven to be quite impactful. And one of the things that I really like about it is, as you mentioned, Director, everybody's going to share in this. Like this isn't something that we're focusing in one area. This is something that every city has to deal with and every city has to do. And the more we spread out that impact, the lesser it's going to impact any one particular neighborhood. So that, that makes me happy. A couple of questions. Traffic concurrency for the Druze's project, is that our requirement or is that a state requirement?
That is our requirement. That's in our code when there is a request for a comprehensive plan or rezoning. And that, as I'd mentioned a couple of weeks ago, is not something that we had typically done in the past, but we've noted it is a local requirement. And so that's why we're applying it.
Perfect. I'd just like to express my desire to address that in our upcoming comp plan update. Because not building housing, because we're worried about traffic is what's led to all the traffic. And just having them go through that extra hoop does not make me smile. So if we could address that in our comp plan update or at least have the conversation about it with all council, I would appreciate that very much. Other question I have is, for years now, since before 1110 was passed, we had been looking at four units citywide. And I would like to get back to that because that's what we did most of our public outreach for and that's kind of the policy direction that we had given. Can we get back to that rather than simply implementing 1110, which was given to us? And we're, finish up kind of what we've been working on?
Well, as I mentioned, the code that was essentially this subject of the public hearing in July did advertise under the two-units allowance for a lot to go to four would certainly be going above and beyond. It would be consistent with 1110, certainly. That would really be the council's decision as to whether they wanted to go back to that. And you know, that kind of discussion could give staff guidance. If the timing is something you wanted to discuss as well, that would be valuable.
Would that affect timing?
Well, based on the schedule that I've put forth here, this is based on the code that was
that was presented at the public hearing in July. If there was going to be a change, I would have to consult with our city attorney to find out what the process would be to make an amendment to what was already publicly advertised.
Would you like a show of hands from the dais right here to see if council would like to figure that out and go back to four?
Sure.
All right.
If we're going to have that discussion, we should probably be able to discuss it a little bit more.
Oh, for sure. But yeah, just plan on it. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to approve it, and there'll have to be another public hearing, and we'll have those conversations, but it's a conversation I'd like to have, because we never had a conversation at council to bring it down. So I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we, we just do what we have been continuing to do.
I would note that although the state is not required to provide us with guidance until January, I would not be surprised if there is a draft set of guidelines from the state well in advance of December, and I'm hoping that could give us some indication of how our code as advertised would comport with state law.
Okay.
And I think that would give us more insight as to upping that to the four, as you mentioned.
Well, I will cross my fingers for speedy people at Commerce then. Councilmember Dodd.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify, I'm interested in seeing both options, as the mayor talked about, four and two. I also am really hesitant to take steps before we have even the draft guidance from Commerce, because it's, it's felt far away. It's now October, January is shockingly close, so I appreciate you saying that we might have a draft before that, because it's going to be hard to do, to just commit to something before we have that draft guidance, so that's really good. But yeah, I'd like to see what options we have, and then, of course, have our public hearing to really hear from people and just have kind of two paths we could take. I think that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would, I would agree, we definitely need to make sure we hear from the public if we're going to make a change and definitely have a public hearing opportunity. Can you, I believe you said it was nine thou, is it 9,000 units, housing units that we need from zero to 80?
That's correct, a little over 9,000 units is what we have tabulated from the combining King County and Snohomish County growth targets based on that income range, a little over 9,000.
Okay, so that's adding 9,000, zero to 80, just over 9,000. And can you tell me how many housing units we have in King and Snohomish County right now, currently, the city?
I, I would be able to, and I can give you that information, I can't estimate that right now.
Can we maybe get that in the future?
Yes, absolutely.
Fabulous, thank you.
I have one more question. The memo mentioned additional flexibility is going to be needed to comply with House Bill 1220. What form do you see that taking? I mean, obviously, that's going to be a council decision, but like, what is that, what is that going to look like, or some of the options?
Well, there are a variety of alternative compliance options that are included as a high-level description in HB 1110 for meeting the requirements of 1110, and that's the kind of flexibility that we're hoping will be provided by Commerce, how we can tailor that to meet Bothell's needs, and I'm assuming many other cities are also trying to figure out how to take what would be a boilerplate model code and how they can make those adjustments to meet local conditions.
For 1220, not 1110?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm talking about 1110, you're referring to 1220.
Yeah, like a memo mentioned that 1220 is going to require us to probably do more than what we're doing, and I'm wondering kind of what, what form that will take.
Well, it's going to require us to, I think, look at a range of housing types that would meet the 0 to 80 AMI, and for example, we've gotten guidance from Commerce that that is going to be low and mid-rise residential buildings, and that flexibility may be necessary in areas of the city that typically have not accommodated that housing type or that kind of density in order to be able to achieve that growth target.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Just out of curiosity, if, what happens if we don't achieve those growth targets by the timelines, or we don't do anything?
Funny you should ask that question. We actually have, as part of our presentation next week, a discussion, and you'll see in the agenda bill, some discussion of what the opportunities are for compliance and what the ramifications are for not having a plan that complies with not only 1220, but just the Growth Management Act, the impacts of, on the city fiscally in particular. We'll have a little bit of a discussion about that next week.
Are you going to keep us in suspense then?
I mean, it does, it impacts our general fund, it impacts the ability for us to process local projects, for projects to vest, to compete for state funds, transportation funds, and other types of funds. It has pretty significant impacts if we don't have a plan that complies.
Sounds pretty severe.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And as it happens, we just heard today that we're going to need some more transportation All right, I think we're good. Thank you. It's your turn. City manager report.
All right, well, we saved the best or the lightest for last, for sure, but no less important. So last week during council conversations, there was a question raised about the Adopt a Drain program, more specifically about signs being available in 2023. As I was typing up some thoughts tonight, the rain and leaves were swirling in the air, and so let me just say, we're glad you asked. There are a couple of updates related to this. So actually, the timing was great last week, because just this week, towards the end of the week, postcards are being mailed out to residents, particularly in areas of the city that have been identified as having a high concentration of deciduous trees. So maybe not everybody will get one, but there will be information online for everyone, and you shouldn't be expecting to see information in your mailboxes by the end of the week. In terms of signs, signs are provided to anyone who adopts or re-drain, or even if you've already been a adoptee, adopter, if you adopt another drain, you'll get a new sign, and that's part of a welcome packet that's received by anyone who expresses interest. Now, residents are encouraged to keep their signs from year to year, but we also know that life happens, and that doesn't always, that doesn't always work out. So if somebody is in need of a new sign to mark a previously adopted drain, they can reach out to program staff, and that contact information will be on the cards and on the website. This update would be really dry if left to my own devices. So Kristi Cox, I want to thank her, she's our surface water program coordinator, many of you probably know her for community events and fun things, so some bonus fun facts that she's provided to spice this up a little bit and keep your attention. So since the launch of the program, which was just last September, the city has seen 152 storm drain adoptions in Bothell. There's been a reported of those people who have adopted drains, 360 pounds of debris removed from storm drains by volunteers as part of this program, so it's making a difference. All right, and the real fun stuff, if you, if you're looking to adopt for the first time or looking to adopt a new drain, just so you know what your competition is, you get the opportunity to name your drains that you adopt, and some of the staff favorites so far include Don't Stop Deleefen, Midnight Drain to Bothell, Stormy Weathers, and I want to make sure I say this very clearly, Hermione Dranger. Also, within information that Kristi provided, there's a lot of things going on in the community in October, if you haven't noticed, and our community events and outreach have been full, and so we've been having to rotate things through. So there's a few more things we want to highlight to anyone who not only is interested in helping clear the storm drains, but also maybe some other things related to taking care of our community. So Thursday night of this week, again, a postcard did go out about two weeks ago, I think I got mine, about some events going on around natural yard care. There's a workshop Thursday night that's on Zoom for anyone who isn't looking to get out in the rain, but from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., the topic of that one is called Right Plant, Right Place. I'm thinking about doing that one myself, I have some front yard issues. On Saturday, there's an Orca Recovery Day, which is a regional event, there's a local Bothell event taking place that's hosted by Friends of North Creek Forest, and it's an effort to remove invasive weeds. They'll be meeting at North Creek Forest from 10:00 to 1:00, so 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. Also on Saturday at Blythe Park from 12:30 to 2:00, there'll be an in-person workshop called Container Gardening with Native Plants. All of this information is on the community calendar on the city's website, and if you need to reach out for more information, Kristi Cox is your point of contact. So again, thanks for the, for the question, I'm glad it prompted some updates about good activities taking place in the community. And with that, I think we can move on from the reports.
Council committee reports. Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. This Thursday is the day that King County Executive Constantine is hosting an in-person event for the King County Cities Climate Coalition, or as we love to say, K4C, because that is a lot. I will be there as our K4C representative. If you would like to carpool, let me know, you can still register to go, it is Thursday afternoon in Seattle.
All right. Moving on to visitor comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. First off, I'd like to say we received two written comments, one from Randy Bannaker, who wrote regarding his support for increased housing supply and affordability, and Mark Swanson wrote in regarding the PSE heat pump pilot project. And then we have Ann Agard, who signed up to speak, and she is coming down the hall right now. Ann, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Yes. I'm addressing your agenda bill 23152, which is the adoption of the Shoreline Management Code amendments, which is attachment three, is the letter that I wrote to you on September 20th clarifying that the Shoreline Management Code amendments are a separate issue from the request that came to you from the Shoreline Board in October to meet with you regarding some possible impacts to the riparian buffer area within the shoreline management area, within the shoreline management area from middle housing. As Dave Boyd clarified, the one property, the dirt load project, dirt lowered project has now made, filed for a permit, so it is vested under the existing laws. So I would like to suggest that the council possibly, that the council invite the former Shoreline Board, since our terms have expired, possibly on the November 7th meeting time, when you will be discussing the shoreline element as part of your agenda item, and this would be a good time for us to address some of these concerns about possible impacts unto the riparian area from middle housing. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I've got that's signed up to speak. We do have one person in the audience, in the virtual audience, that wishes to speak, so we're going to pin all that person in, and if anybody in the audience here in chambers would like to speak, please let me know, and we'll have you go up to the podium. Justin, go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Justin Buhard, have been in person quite a few times, but I can't make it this time. This is about the middle housing code amendments. I've gone through the agenda packet and the proposed changes. I think the big takeaway is that the proposed amendments were, not a lot of it was under, I would say, contention. What I'm concerned about is that we're drifting towards throwing the baby out with the, with the bathwater, because you know, like, this was maybe supposed to go back in May, and then now it's July, and now we're pushing to December, and then, you know, at some point, is it a 2023 comp plan amendment? Like, if you only get one shot to make a change in a given year, right, I'm not sure that letting perfection be, you know, the enemy of progress is the way to go. So that, that's more or less my comment here, is that I think that Bothell is and can still be a leader, that would require, you know, passing amendments, and that, you know, passing everything that isn't, you know, under, say, direct conflict with state bills would still be better, and they can always be, you know, amended as new information comes from the state and things like that. But, you know, the fact that we're going to push up against the December deadline, it's not clear to me whether you, you know, you can still go beyond that and still get your one shot, but I just want, I just want that to be in people's minds a little bit, is that, yeah, don't, don't let, don't let perfection be the enemy of progress, and let's, let's at least, you know, get things moving, because I just went through the EDU process, and that took a lot of time, and that was a relatively simple change in my case, and the more we delay, the more time it takes for real concrete projects to move forward. And so I'd still rather sort of unblock people in the things that aren't contentious or under, you know, yeah, problematic under the current state bills and just amend as new information comes along. That's what I wanted to share.
Great, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, we are going to take a 10-minute break. It is 7:07. We will be back at 7:17, but we will be back in executive session pursuant to RCW 4230 110 1I. Anticipated to last 30 minutes with no action expected, so then that would be 7:47, that would be, we would be back here in chambers. Do I need to say anything else? Welcome back. Next up in our meeting is the projected agenda discussion. Seeing nothing, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Aldrich to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes five to zero with council members Menke and Zorn absent and excused.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, next up, we've got Agenda Bill 23151, Approval of Ordinance Proposing the Issuance of Limited Tax General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Refunding, Refinancing Outstanding Limited Tax General Obligation Bonds, 2013B and 2014. I don't even know why we need a presentation after that, it was so clear. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, just for a quick, by way of background as well, since the city clerk just did a vote count, I just want to point out, we don't normally have a lot of ordinances come before you, it's not a regular thing. Tonight, we have two, and we have a quorum tonight, and we only have five, five members. So what I wanted to just clarify at the beginning of this, in case we have a vote for ordinances, just as a reminder that it requires the majority of council, not the majority in attendance, so it will take four, four votes or more to, to, for, on the affirmative to carry. There's other actions council could take other than adopting the ordinances, but I just did want to put that out upfront so that it's, that it's clear for everyone watching as well. So we have, with those two items, the first one, as you mentioned, I will not read the title again, but I just want to remind everyone that our finance director, Quan Wong, was here last month doing a preview of some items that are coming up, both related to the mid-biennial budget update, but also this item, which is easily summarized of, we have the potential of saving some money. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Quan Wong, who is joined by our partner, Matt Schoenfeld from PMF Investments, to PFM, excuse me, PFM Investments, to walk us through this topic. Quan, take it away.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I was here about a couple of weeks ago to give you an update on the 2023 mid-biennium update, and the city is doing great. So we always look for budget-saving opportunities, and this is is an opportunity for the city council to consider in refinancing two of our outstanding bonds. One is coming up, is callable on, or in December 2023, and then the second one is callable in March of 2024. So we are going to present our ordinance to you and give you the opportunity to vote in the affirmative. I have here with Matt from PFM Financial Advisor, the city's financial advisor, so he's going to give you the details and the projected savings. Matt?
Thank you, Quan, and thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers, for having me today. As you so inferred, this is a presentation about how we can maybe save money. As Quan mentioned, there are two series of LTGO bonds, limited tax general obligation bonds, that have call dates coming up within the next five months or so. Both series of bonds were used to finance some of the LIFT, or Local Infrastructure Financing Tool, projects that were part of the downtown redevelopment. The way that municipal bonds are generally structured is 10 years after issuance, you have the opportunity to call them. It's an option that you can then call them back and issue new bonds to refinance those previously issued bonds. If we can go to the next slide, actually, sorry. Just looking at that, you can see that the outstanding par amounts, that's what we called, and is effectively the maximum amount that we have set for the upcoming transaction. The ordinance on the next slide specifies certain transaction parameters. The bonds will not be issued in an amount greater than $28 million, which is effectively the amount currently outstanding. It sets the maximum interest rates of 5.5% per maturity, or an aggregate blended true interest cost of 5%. Additionally, the kind of the minimum savings that we would be required to achieve on behalf of the city would be 3% net present value savings. It also sets an expiration date of the ordinance of December 31, 2024. It designates, and it designates city staff to enter into the agreement with the eventual underwriter. To look at the kind of the potential savings opportunity, and we say potential because the market has not been behaving as we would like. Interest rates have been increasing, you know, even if you follow the news with mortgage rates, mortgage rates have been increasing. The Fed keeps increasing rates, which is directly correlated to the municipal market. When we put this together, I think on the 26th of September, in advance of this meeting, we estimated a net present value savings of about $1.3 million. That equates to about a 4.76% NPV savings percentage, which, as a reminder, the three, we set a 3% minimum threshold. The way that we have the bonds expected to be structured would have that basically be pretty even throughout the remaining outstanding life of the bonds. You'll see the step down in 2033 to 2034. That's when the 2013 bonds would be final maturity, and then the remainder would be the 2014 bonds. If we go next slide. In summary, that's the quick and easy explanation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the explanation. I mean, it was straightforward to the mayor's point. I mean, we didn't need a presentation. But question about, you brought up the point about how the market is chaotic, you know, to put it mildly. What's the best-case scenario, and what's the worst-case scenario?
The worst-case scenario would be the status quo. We wouldn't recommend going to market if we can't meet the savings, and then the current bonds would just keep being outstanding. You know, certainly, rates could improve, and we could see greater savings. You know, when we first started this conversation with the city in kind of the beginning of August, we were actually estimating closer to $3 million in savings, just to give you an idea of how much the markets moved, and that's all rate-related. So, you know, I certainly am not going to make any promises about where rates are going to go, but, you know, the market can always improve. You know, we'll see when the time to actually go to market is, comes about.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I like that the worst that can happen is we're just where we are now. That's nice. I know you had said we had to wait 10 years before we could revisit these. Is there, I don't quite know how to ask this, but like, let's say we wait a year. That would basically just be hoping that things are better with the market, right? And would, if we do this now, we have to wait another 10 years or never again, or?
Yeah, good question. So the way that it works is, you have the option to exercise your option 10 years from the first maturity, so basically 10 maturities after you issue. That only goes away once you exercise the option, and then it's typically reset for another 10 years. So in theory, if we were to do it now, then the 2013Bs wouldn't have another opportunity to do it, because there's only 10 years remaining. The 2014s have 15 years remaining, so there would, in theory, be another opportunity to refinance those 10 years from the issue date.
Okay. That makes sense. I'm not, oh, sorry. Oh, I was going to say, I'm not saying let's wait. I just kind of wanted to make sure I had all the options in preference. So, thank you.
And I was just going to tag on to clarify that part of the reason then of having, why there's an expiration date on this is just, again, we don't want it to then become something that disappears into the, into the, into the area there. We'll continue to monitor this, and as Matt mentioned, it doesn't reset until we take an action. That's part of why then there's the thresholds that he mentioned, too, of what's written into the ordinance of communicating to council, is we won't do anything lower than that. But certainly, we'll be looking for, we'll be looking for better movement.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed.
No pressure.
I would like to save $100,000 a year. So I don't really have any questions. I think we're, I'll take a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and deliver of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds as specified, which will be used to refund limited tax obligation bonds 2013B and limited tax general obligation bonds 2014. Refinancing the bonds would provide both, oh, that's it.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from the deputy mayor, and I've got a second from Councilmember Aldrichs. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no on a call your name, Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Menke and Zorn absent.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 23152, an ordinance for Shoreline Management Code amendments. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, our second action tonight is the return of Shoreline's Management Code amendments. Council had this last before you on September 5. There was a public hearing on the Shoreline's Board Recommendations. I want to just clarify in terms of options tonight. Council, as always, can adopt the ordinance, you can choose not to adopt the ordinance, you can amend the ordinance, that's always an option. The other thing is, anytime something comes to you from an advisory body, too, if there are any outstanding questions, you can always remand things back to them to do additional work. It's always good to have a specific direction. I will acknowledge that, in this case, the, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting today, and I know council's aware that we have not reappointed Shoreline Board members, that is something that the council would be taking up next year, as there is a periodic flow to the Shoreline Board body of work. But again, this is something that we could, we could hold on to and to transmit. So just to make it clear to council that there are options, and if you have any questions about what those options are, I'm thankful that we are joined tonight by Senior Planner Dave Boyd. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Dave, if he's ready.
Beg your pardon, I got bumped out of the meeting here. I'm trying to log back in. I do have a very brief presentation, so.
Dave, would it help to have somebody share the slides for you? Would you like?
Yeah, go ahead.
Robin will bring it up, so you can go ahead, and she'll catch up to you.
I do have two slides that weren't in the publicly accessible one, that I may, I'm going to continue to try to log in. So we are bringing back to you an item that was before you in study session on May 9, and in a public hearing on September 5, to, and this is potential action on Shoreline's Board Recommendations for Bothell Municipal Code Title 13, Shoreline Management Amendments. And there are six basic categories that are covered in these amendments. One is buffer reductions, some proposed amendments to the buffer reductions provisions that Shoreline Board actually requested that council initiate in the 2020 docket. Recent updates to critical areas regs that addressed federal FEMA requirements for floodplains, and, and basically superseded what was duplicative language in the Shoreline Code, so we removed that language, and just referenced the critical area regs. Removing redundant special flood area regulations through that action, and, and then addressing hearing examiner recommendations related to the washed-out I405 project that raised questions regarding prohibitions in the code and variances that caused some, the need for some gymnastics to approve that project. And then there was some updated ecology guidance that we took into account, and other housekeeping changes that came up as part of this, these amendments. Next. Just briefly, the Shoreline buffer reductions. We do have a number of structures, pre-existing structures within shoreline buffers. This image illustrates an area of shoreline residential environment, where a number of single-family homes are within the buffer. It is also true in the high-intensity environment, particularly in our, in the business parks, where there are some existing structures within those buffers. The proposed amendments only address the ability to do buffer reductions on new development on vacant land in the high-intensity environment. They retain the option for buffer reductions with substantial redevelopment in both the shoreline residential and high-intensity environments. Next. And then I did want to address middle housing in the shoreline jurisdiction. Critical area regulations still apply. There are tools in the Shoreline Management Program that provide flexibility for single-family residences to expand and provide ADUs and/or middle housing. The lot sizes and shoreline buffer requirements will limit the size and configuration of middle housing units and ADUs. And the, at the hearing on September 5, there was some concern and some confusion about the Shoreline Board's request to meet with council to discuss middle housing. And then the letter, your attachment 3 in tonight's packet from Anne Agard clarified that the intent was not to hold up the Shoreline Board Recommendations consideration, but, but to, when you do get back to middle housing, to include them in that discussion. Next. So in conclusion, the purpose of tonight's meeting is simply to act on these recommendations with a motion and a vote on the Shoreline Board Recommendations.
Dave, I think your presentation was so good that they're just taking a moment before they have questions. Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. I said this in a recent meeting, so I understand that the Shoreline's Board maybe hasn't time, had time to respond. But regarding middle housing, which we're not here to talk about, but I would really be curious what the goal of that joint meeting would be, given that our, that middle housing is still subject to critical areas regulations. I just want to understand the purpose. I think that that part hasn't been detailed out. Totally clear that it doesn't involve what we're doing tonight, but that's kind of what I'm waiting for personally. I don't know if anyone else is in that boat, but I would just love more on what the goal of that session would be.
I believe that the goal was just to have a more robust discussion of what, what the impacts are and what, what potential remedies there might be to address those impacts. There was a motion before the board to exclude shoreline jurisdiction from middle housing. That didn't pass, but the board did support the letter to request a meeting with council to discuss their concerns.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I have a couple of questions. The, it was brought up at the last meeting, there were just a couple vacant lots, I believe, left on the shoreline. I'm uncomfortable with the idea of removing an option from just the last couple lots on a river that every other lot on the river has had available to them, and we also lose the potential for buffer improvements that we could demand if the exception's used. Is this something that is required or recommended by ecology?
No. Ecology approved the buffer reductions back when they were adopted in 2013, and they would support retaining them, and they were also supportive of the board's recommendation to remove them. There are arguments, scientific arguments, to support either position.
So ecology would view them as roughly neutral in terms of environmental impact?
I'm not sure I would put those words in their mouth, but they felt that either was defensible.
Okay. Did staff make a recommendation to the Shoreline Board?
Our initial recommendation, along with our consultants, was to retain the buffer reductions. And, and for the most part, we did, we did the analysis to determine how many properties were left. There were, there are more vacant parcels than the two, but there were two that were determined to actually have redevelopment potential.
Okay.
A number of them also have other critical areas constraints, wetlands and/or other situations. There are really two vacant parcels in the high-intensity environment at the time the Shoreline Board was meeting, one of which was already in permit review. Now the other one is in permit review. So provided those projects go forward, there, there's little impact of this either way. And board members argued both ways. They said, it's not going to have much of an impact, so let's keep it as it is. They're saying, well, it's not going to take away much in any case, so let's, let's remove these reductions.
It seems like the biggest impact would be on the, on the property owners, if for whatever reason, they needed to get a new permit, because it seems like both of them have expressed desire to build something?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, there's a bunch of people that haven't talked yet, so I'm going to open it back up to the council, but better river buffers and a more fair outcome seem like the best path forward to me.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm with the mayor on, on that concern about these vacant lots. Is it possible to approve these amendments with the original staff recommendation instead of what Shoreline's Board, how do, how do we do that?
I do have a slide that would show an amendment to the recommendation in your packet, which is just removing three words that were added that I can share with you. packet, which is just removing three words that were added that I can share with you.
I'd like to see that, but I'd want to check with my colleagues up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Section 10 of the ordinance includes BMC 13.13.060, and subsection 4B is where the, the three words to substantial redevelopment were added to the provision for buffer reduction, thus removing the high-intensity environment, so, and amendment to just remove that. Those three words that are highlighted in the bottom part of the screen would retain those buffer reductions.
Councilmembers, for, in the ordinance in your packet, it's on total page 123 of your packet tonight.
Yeah, at the bottom of page 123.
Thank you for the orientation there. Appreciate it. I think I found a different number 10.
There it is.
Any other questions or comments? Well, if nobody else has anything, oh, Councilmember Dodd?
I was going to make a motion.
Make a motion.
I move that we modify the proposed ordinance to remove the substantial redevelopment term in section 10 subsection 4B, as indicated on the slide we just had up.
Question. Should we move the recommended action first and then amend it rather than start with the amendment?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Eileen Kiefer, interim city attorney, you don't need to move the recommended action first. You can just make the motion for move to adopt with, you know, X, Y, and Z. I think Councilmember Dodd-
I was almost there.
Okay.
I think she framed it well. As long as we can tell what council is intending to do, that's what we need.
Okay, fantastic.
Do you want me to restate?
Don't think you need to.
Okay.
So I can second that.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor from Councilmember Dodd, and a second from Councilmember Aldrich to approve the proposed ordinance with the one edit. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. I would like to have the opportunity to have at least had one more chance to speak with the Shorelines Board. So, I will not be supporting this motion. It does not mean I don't support the work, but I will not be supporting it without having, at least having that one more opportunity to speak with the Shorelines Board.
City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
No.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes four to one with Councilmembers, Councilmember McNeil dissenting, and Councilmembers Menke and Zorn's absent and excused.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right. Next up, we have a study session for Agenda Bill 23153, but I'm going to say that down there. All right, we have Agenda Bill 2315, oh, wait, no, nope, 23153, update on the progress of city council three-year priorities. City Manager?
All right, and so for the first study session this evening is an opportunity to hear from staff with an update on where things are at in terms of the council priorities, as stated. We were before you in May of this year talking about resources of what would be needed, and some, giving an initial picture of what would be anticipated within the three years designed for making our way through the priorities and what, what would be able to be accomplished. So, kind of a scoping schedule and budget discussion. We are committed to bringing regular updates to council, and tonight is the first opportunity for that. Leading the conversation tonight is our deputy city manager, Toni Call, and she is also joined in the audience by several of our executive leadership team members who, many of which have responsibility for monitoring and driving these priorities forward as well. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Toni.
Thank you, City Manager Standard. Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members, as always, it is a pleasure to be here to share our work with you. It's always a joy to do that. And before I start, I need to echo the fact that I'm sitting up here being the talking head, but all the real work is happening right there. So, a lot of good work is happening on your priorities, and it's nice to be able to share it with you this evening. So, no action tonight. We're here to update you, so no action is needed from you. We'll do a quick agenda. I'll spend a few minutes, just a short bit of time, talking about the background and how we all got to this place in October, and then I'll step into the council priority update, and we'll go through them at that time. So from the background perspective, it has been 10 months since the council met back in January for three days, and coming out of that three-day retreat was a council vision and a set of priorities. In March, just almost seven months ago, the council adopted your vision, and you also endorsed the three-year priorities that were established at the time. As City Manager Standard mentioned, staff was back here in June, and at that point, we can't, we provided you an overall timeline, how we thought we'd be able to get the work done over the next three years. And we also talked about the resource need to be able to accomplish that, and the council did pass a budget amendment that allowed us to use some American Rescue Fund money, so some ARPA money, one-time money, to help make sure these investments are moving forward. So, as we have seen, your, your vision statement starts with a wonderful preamble that I think many people are starting to memorize for a day or a lifetime, no matter where you, no matter who you are or where you've come from. Bothell is your hometown. That vision and that first few paragraphs of that vision is the basis for how you also established, comes, your seven strategic focus areas. So, within each of these focus areas, you have paragraphs of a vision statement attached to them. I'll go through all of these in just a minute, but under each of these areas, you have anywhere between three to six priorities to be delivered over the next three years in order to help deliver the vision that you have for the city. So, there's a total of 28 three-year priorities, and I'm really pleased to be able to say that 19 are in progress and underway, and we have nine that have not yet quite started. Some of those are not started because other work needs to be completed, and some of them are just on the schedule to start next year. So there's a couple of reasons why they've not started, and when I get through each of the priorities, I'll mention kind of what's holding up the nine that still haven't quite moved forward. So, starting with connecting neighborhoods for one city, you have three priorities here. You heard from Director Greenspan earlier this evening about the work on middle housing, which fits under this priority, and then also the comprehensive plan has a housing element that is also underway. So all of that work is moving forward and coming back to council. The neighborhood assessment will happen in 2024, and then the plan to address the neighborhood assessment will obviously happen after the assessment has been completed. So, that's the status of those. Heading into economic vitality, staff is currently working on that economic vitality plan, RFP and scope. We anticipate coming back to council probably in the first quarter of 2024. And the other one that I would highlight on this list is the long-range financial plan. Director Wong has been here a couple of times recently, and we'll be back again next week on October 17th to talk some more about the mid-biennium and the long-range financial plan. So that's also underway. Moving on to a community of trust and respect, there's quite a bit of work that's been done on the communication plan and tools. When you look through the, the pack-up materials, there's quite a few things. Gabby Kuna was here in September talking about the DEI plan and the implementation to move that forward. And then the next study session, which I'm sure you're all very, sitting on pins and needles for, continues to move forward on the council meeting engagement and improvements with your protocol manual. You'll get a new agenda for that and some other items that come that direction. The fourth item is still in hold. It is actively modern demographic data. A portion of the comp plan will be doing a data analysis, so there will be a piece of data attached to that comp plan. Once that work gets done, staff will be able to move forward and get additional data. So, that is probably happening in '24 and '25. A joyful and healthy way of life. I'm not going to hit all five of these priorities. I do want to bring your attention to, I think, the largest one on the list, which is number three, initiate construction at the Park of Bothell Landing. That ARPA money y'all authorized earlier in the year set aside $1.5 million to move from conceptual design to design work. We are currently in conceptual design, so once we get through design, there'll be permitting, and once you get through permitting, then we're shovel-ready to hit the ground. We've repeatedly said that that's going to be a stretch to get done in three years, but we are actively working it, and Nick Stroop and his team, this is a big project for them to move, moving forward with. Assessing the needs and opportunities for sports programs at the bottom. Additionally, some of that ARPA money paid for a consultant to do that work. That work starts in '24. That's just when it's scheduled. Environmental stewardship, this is one of your six priority items. I'm just going to hit a couple on here. Strategy to preserve and enhance trees has not yet started. It will start as the comp plan gets a little bit further along, and of course, it will also include a tree canopy work. And then number four on this is also on hold. That is the public education for trails and natural habitat. We do have budgeted in the '24, original budget dollars to do signage as a pilot program in the former Wayne Golf Course work. That work will happen in '24, so that is scheduled and ready to go, but not has that started yet. And the last item, I would just bring your attention to the foster and partner with indigenous people. Yesterday, our DEI person, Gabby, along with Cascadia and the Northshore School District did a really nice job at the Indigenous Peoples' Day. So that is also, those connections and partnerships are moving forward. Building Bothell's beloved community. There's a couple of items on here. First, DEI quarter, Gabby Kuna is working to engage with the King Center and starting the research on that work. The programming to support community or neighborhood coalitions, that item is still on pause mainly because the work that needs to do that is that neighborhood assessment that was way back in the beginning slide that we talked about. So when that assessment gets done, we know what the gaps are, then we can establish programming. So it's more of a dependency issue than a, than anything else. And the last item on the list is develop a human services plan. As you know, we have hired a human services coordinator, and Anad is doing amazing work out there and starting that human services need analysis. So that work is moving forward. Our last strategic focus area is the moving in and around Bothell. A couple of thoughts on this. Plan for zero traffic deaths in concert with the comprehensive plan. There's a safety plan that's underway that will feed and provide information for a plan for zero traffic deaths. Strategies to better manage parking are primarily tied to the comp plan, so that will come back as the comp plan gets a little bit further along. And a Bothell circulator bus feasibility, that also has not actively started yet, though we do have an opportunity with the Canyon Park Traffic Demand Management Program that is just starting. So there is a possibility that could also connect there. So, currently still showing that on hold because it's not quite sure yet. And the last item is attached to the comp plan. So, again, quick update on where we are on your priorities. I think it's important to note that of your 28, 19 are actively moving forward. We've got nine that are on hold, but they all have plans, and so I think the future is bright there. And one of the things that came out of our last time together was that y'all asked for, "How are you going to measure? How are we going to know when we've met the vision? How do we, how are you going to get the measurement done?" ELT, or the executive leadership team, or the team of people behind us, are currently establishing some draft measures to bring back to you. Hope to have those for you at our next update of your council priorities, but they are actively being worked to come up with a set of measures that would tell us, "Have we made it to the vision?" So with that, people are here to answer any detailed questions you have, and we are available. Overall, I'm hopeful this is a good news story for you. So thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, I have questions on, on a few that are marked as in progress. And I guess I'm just curious, like, what does in progress look like on those items? Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I have three.
If not, I've got people on the line that can help.
Okay. So the Parks Levy and the youth community center and pool, I'd love to hear, what, what do those, what have those steps so far looked like?
Sure. On the, on the Parks Levy, I'll start with that one first, and then the second one on the pool, I'm going to have to have Becky, I think, come forward and give a little bit of help on that one. So, on the Parks Levy, that is part of our long-range financial plan. The finance department has started to work with our financial advisors to do a revenue analysis and some of the work around what our capacity is, so that when that comes forward, it's informed by the broader city. So, that work is moving forward. I anticipate it, based on the last set of information I saw from Director Wong, I believe it will come forward in '24 as part of your '25, '26 deliberations. Kwon, is that right? That is correct. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer some questions and give you a little bit of an update. It's kind of a timely update. We had been doing some coordination work with neighboring cities about how they're addressing different community center needs, but we're actively supporting through the work with the NPRSA to execute a grant from King County to start a feasibility and site analysis study for what a youth community center could look like in this area and what the needs are. And we actually interviewed two consultant firms this morning, actually, to start that grant work, so we're pretty excited about that.
Cool. I'm glad I asked.
Yeah.
Sure.
First, sorry, Becky. For citing that community center, is this North King County? Is it Al King County? Like, what sort of, what are the, what's the geography of where that might be?
Right now, because the partner, the partnership is with NPRSA, NPRSA boundaries are all of the Northshore School District. And so, we're really excited because both firms today spoke at great length about how important it is to do really quality community engagement and to be, be listeners in the process and have the community tell us what the needs are before we really even move- process and have the community tell us what the needs are before we really even move forward. So it's pretty exciting.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thanks for letting me jump in.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. Next up is Shelton View was mentioned as in-process, and so I'd love to hear what, what has been done on that?
I think we've continued to have conversations. I'm going to see if Nick is available. I can't, yep, he's coming up. There's been continued conversations on Shelton View, so I will let him speak a little bit more to that.
So that is correct. We've had multiple conversations with various agencies, including the Department of Natural Resources, Snohomish County, Shelton View, Stewardship Association. We're also talking with Coast Equity Partners, which own one of the parcels that we're interested in, and we've also had some outreach with the Snohomish County Conservation Futures Board.
Wow. And how, what have those, to the extent that you can state, like, how are those conversations going? What is, what is that like?
I would say that they're going positive. We are on, I believe, on a path to achieve the, the goal. However, this is a very complex real estate transaction, and it's going to take some time to, to work through the issues.
So I believe that there are a number of members of our community who would be very excited to hear that. I realize there's not, there's this no proficient, like, official announcement, but like, how, besides this conversation right now, what can we tell the community?
I, you know, I, I, there's not a whole lot that we can disclose because there's a lot of complexity to the acquisition of three different parcels, but I will say that a lot of people are working towards this issue. There seems to be a lot of really positive energy to move this forward, both at the state and the regional and the local level, so.
That is exciting for how dry that is.
Can I ask a follow-up? Is there a timeline that you guys have set in place, like a deadline, or is it just until things get figured out?
Yeah, there's no, there's no timeline because, like I said, with the, with the complex, you know, real estate transactions, and we're dealing with multiple agencies trying to secure funding, trying to, you know, negotiate land deals, it does take some time.
Okay, I have one more question, and then I'm ready to pass it off to others. And so you mentioned that, well, and I was, I was present yesterday at the Indigenous Peoples' Day event. My sixth grader attended with me, and it was a really positive experience, I think, to be interactive at the level that a middle schooler could also participate with adults. And anyway, I have positive things to say. But I'm wondering, what are some other steps or what else has been going on in the work of fostering relationships with local tribes and Indigenous people?
I can see if Becky wants to add any more to that, but I would suggest that Gabby's been on board now for several months and is starting to create community connections across the community. And so I would suggest that it's really about conversations to, to connect. She did a great job bringing, bringing the Indigenous Peoples' Day together yesterday. Do you want to add to that?
Oh, absolutely. It was amazing to see, just in the short amount of time, the relationships that Gabby has started to build. One of the things, though, that we're cognizant of is that there are tribal relationships and engagement work that happened through our planning process. And so one of the things we're excited about is moving forward on the telling Bothell's story, the update of the historical narrative. There's some foundational work that needs to happen in that area before we can even move forward on some of the more core DEI work, and so we're excited to move forward on that.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing that and having additional information to, for that question, so thank you. And that is, that's, those are the questions that I had, so thanks so much.
I just want to jump in because the impact that Gabby has had in just a few months has been incredibly noticeable, like, especially yesterday. It's like, this is, this is a lot of impact for a short period of time.
I'd like to just comment on both that position and the human services coordinator position. The reason why they're both so impactful and so successful right now is because they truly value community engagement and relationships. So both of them immediately jumped into the community and started meeting people and listening to them and asking them questions and asking their insight, and that's what drives their work. And so it's really exciting to see that.
I was just going to sneak in and second that. I think we had, as we've talked about, staff members doing this kind of on the side of the jobs they have on paper, and they were doing great work. And having two people dedicated to these positions has made such a remarkable and clear, we've just made so much progress, so it's been really great to witness.
I was going to jump in and just say one more thing on the Shelton View thing. The, we've had to engage with a lot of different jurisdictions, and the support from different electeds at those different jurisdictions is, is all there, and we've got a team of regional friends that, that are committed to helping us with this as well. I don't think that's saying too much, is it, Nick?
The question I have is about the updates, the regular updates. Do you, do you have those specify, or a cadence already set?
We had committed, coming back to you, something close to quarterly. So the last time we were here was in May. We're here in October, so it's not a perfect quarter system, but I suspect you'll see us back in February. I don't know how much progress you'll see in three short months, but, you know, it'll come back. And again, we're also working on those performance metrics, so.
In the spirit of conversational study sessions, I'll just share too that one of the, yes, that we waited a little bit more than a quarter, but we also thought for the first part of it, like, that, that probably makes some sense. One of the conversations we were having is, you know, and we want to make sure that council has visibility into the work that's being done. And really, really dry procedural things. This could have been potentially a staff report, could have been a study session, and but what we've decided is, is that what our intent will be is to bring this forward to study sessions because it offers more conversational opportunity of detail and that sort of thing. Not that you can't ask questions for a staff report, but again, the intention of sitting where we're sitting, we want to take advantage of that. At some point, you might say, you know what? We're good. And if, if a different format of, of updates are what you're looking for, again, always, always share that feedback, but we wanted to make sure that there was time for conversation because we're all sort of learning this process together. I know council has had priorities in the past. You've had different updates similar to this, but we, in the spirit of, these are a new set, we wanted to make sure that there was time to have discussion.
You've had KPIs, the, I mean, once we have KPIs implemented and reviewed a couple of times in this, I mean, eventually you might want to say, okay, guys, we don't want to hear your, we're good type thing. Sorry, is it okay if I ask another question? The, about the, the parks, Park at Bothell Landing and conceptual design to, what is it, the, the second, next phase design? Sorry, I'm too tired. So is there a chance we can, are, are, is the public going to have a chance to review what the conceptual design looks like before you go to the regular design?
Absolutely. So we're creating our engagement plan right now. We actually just started meeting with some of the stakeholders today. We met with our concessionaire for our water sports. Later this week, we're meeting with the Bothell Historical Museum, but we've just begun that process. So we're sort of in the learn phase right now, and then that public engagement plan will have a series of opportunities, not only for our community, but for our board and for the council to review.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, that's why I said public, like, we're part of the public, so.
Absolutely.
That's awesome. Do you have a timeline on this or not?
We do. We think that we'll be through conceptual design by second quarter next year, which then will transition right into design because of the, the money that was made available.
That's awesome. Appreciate that.
So that'll be, public outreach will be probably next summer for that?
For the design, actually, no, conceptual design, we'll start seeing public outreach here in probably December.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome. That's very exciting.
Um, thank you.
I'm just going to wait for Nick to get back there again and then ask another question about parks. Sorry, council member.
You're all good. So the presentation today, thank you. Will they continue to be in this format, or will we, will they evolve and become more in-depth, showing snapshots of, you know, where we started, each item where we started, where we are, kind of in a series? Is that kind of how you're seeing the, it moving along, moving forward?
I do. I think as we move forward and we have more time underneath our belt and we have more concrete actions to be able to put timelines on, I think there's a place for that. I think the performance measures or the data-informed piece will also provide a lot of value to ensuring that we're doing the right things to move the vision forward. So I do envision that the product itself will evolve over time. It'll become simpler, I hope, over time as well, so that you have an idea of the, of the near-term steps that are happening.
Yeah, I just, what I always try to go back to is, you know, where were we? Where are we going? What are the outcomes? What do those outcomes look like? Do we need to shift, adapt, adjust, whatever? So I, I think these presentations are hugely informative, so I hopefully, hopefully the council decides to continue with them because it, it really is a snapshot into what we're, the work that we're trying to do.
Yeah, our job is to deliver your vision and your priorities, and I want to make sure that we're here to be able to get that done for you.
I agree. I, I think these are super informative. I was, I, I did think of something when you were talking about the format and everything. I, I, I appreciate and noticed that a lot of you are sticking around longer into the meeting than you might normally if you weren't maybe on call to give updates. I would love to see in future updates, one or two folks, because we'll, we'll ask about things that we're excited about, but one or two things that maybe someone from the ELT wants to highlight, like whether there's a surprising lesson learned or something that they feel would be interesting for us to talk about, because there's no way for us to ask about each of these items in detail every study session, so, and I don't want anyone to feel like they have to come up with something because that's like the worst kind of project, is like something interesting, gosh darn it. But if there's anything that comes up over the quarter that someone would want to share, I'm sure we'll find it fascinating, and we might not ask about it otherwise. So I would love just to, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
That makes me want to ask, what haven't we asked about that somebody would like? Like, is there something that we should know that we haven't asked about? I don't know.
I think at this point, the answer would be no. I think the challenge is, is that we're six months into a three-year project to, to move things forward. I think that over time, we're going to learn certain things. I mean, I think the, the Park at Bothell Landing, I continue to highlight that one because I think it is a big, concrete, easy-to-understand piece, and I think there's going to be some really cool lessons in there. I also think a lot of the work that's embedded in these priorities does a lot of DEI and inclusiveness work, and I think that is harder sometimes to tell the story in concrete tasks, but I think it might fit better coming from a highlight kind of perspective. So I see a couple of different things, just thinking out loud.
I mostly just want to say thank you, like, to everybody involved with this because I know that I'm probably frustrating because I want everything to happen like four times faster than it possibly can. And I'm, I'm, it's really fun to see this because this seems like how it's supposed to work, and just knowing that this is all happening and has been going on, like, over the past nine months and getting briefed on it, just really, it, it heartens me and it just makes me feel like, oh, things are never going to happen as fast as I want them to because I'm not always realistic, but, but these things are happening, and we are making progress on them, and, and that just fills my heart with joy. So I just want to say, thank you all. I appreciate you, and that's it.
I appreciate that. I think a bridge to, and to, we're going to have some protocols discussions here in a second as well, but just, I guess the other thing that I'd fill in in terms of highlighting projects is, one of the things that we're also discussing at the ELT is, as we start bringing things forward, what are the norms and how do we make sure to embed, when there's an aspect of any presentation that's coming forward that touches one of your priorities, how do we make sure to highlight that in agenda bills and, and presentations? Because there's, it doesn't just, the work doesn't just happen on a quarterly basis. So much of the work that you're, that you've asked for, especially as we move forward and things are in process, a lot of them have council touchpoints. So we're going to always try and tie individual items back to the priorities and back to the vision as well. Again, part of that responsiveness to what the council's asked for us to do.
That's awesome. Thank you. One, one last thing, it's a tiny, tiny thing. When you're doing the updates, the checkbox or the hourglass, to me, a check meant it was done, and hourglass meant it was progress, so maybe having a different iconography.
That's a, that's a good, that's a good message. We can work on the icons. Piece of cake. Thank you.
I felt the same way. I was like, check mark, but it's not a green check mark. That means it's not done.
It's not done. It's not green. I look forward to green check marks, but.
But I also thought, like, maybe I'd prefer to see, like, a forward-facing arrow instead of a check mark because it means it's moving forward.
I think we can do that, too.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
But I, thank you for bringing that up because I thought the same thing.
That's great because it didn't register when I was putting it together, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Toni. All right, back to me. Next up, we have a study session. Agenda Bill 23154, the Council Protocol Manual Update. City manager?
All right, welcome to the table, Laura. Yeah, the second study session, and I just mentioned a little bit too, here's, this one, this one is more, that was staff's response to council priorities. This is an opportunity. Okay. This is an opportunity for council to have a discussion about your protocol manual. There's some feedback that has happened intermittently throughout the, the last couple of years. The last update to the protocol manual is in February of 2022. We also then just recently had a conversation on September 5th that had to do with some meeting logistics and agenda improvements. So the protocol update, some of the changes that Laura's going to highlight come from that, of we want to make sure that, then what we're going to do matches what's in the protocol manual. In addition, there's some other technical cleanup items, but if we're going to bring something back for council consideration, we want to make sure we ask the question of, is there anything else council would like to see? With that, I'm going to turn things over to Laura.
Yeah, so the most exciting part of the night, right? Yeah. Thank you. So, yeah, as Kyle said, we talked about this on September 5th, and so tonight we're here to provide feed, to provide feedback on the proposed updates. We'd like your feedback, and then we want to incorporate any other changes that you wish to see in the manual, so. This, again, will review the council vision and the goal to implement improvements to the council meetings and the meeting agenda that result in enhanced communication and greater public engagement. And again, we had a study session on September 5th, and we talked about the improvements and maybe how we could rearrange the agenda so to have better flow and provide a little bit better, you know, public communication, public engagement so that they're heard earlier in the meeting and et cetera. So with that, going to just review some of the proposed protocol manual updates. One is to section 2.08 B1 is adding a residency requirement for boards and commissions, and that includes that they have to stay a resident while they are on board and commissions. We've had a issue where we heard that somebody moved out, and we just want to make sure that that's clear to all our board and commission members going forward. We added clarifying language as section 5.03 on local ballot measures, and the updates to, obviously, to the order of the agenda. Housekeeping issues that we looked at is moving, we moved section 2.08G, council representation on outside committees to its own section because it was kind of tucked in with the board and commission ones, and it wasn't quite in the right place. We removed the section on 5.06 Bothell Bridge, Council Corner. We removed that basically because we're not doing the bridge, like a mailing out anymore, so would like your feedback on that one. Clarifying language in section 10.02 E10, filing, filling council vacancies to match the RCW. That one is more of a geographical match, so if we do have a opening on council, that the actual appointment, if for some reason council couldn't come to a decision on who to appoint, it goes to the county with the greater geographical area. So with, we wanted to make sure we updated that. that, because with, um, say, annexation issue up in Snohomish County, that could become the county of the bigger geographic. So we just want to clarify that. Uh, and then we updated the board and commission matrix, obviously, to get rid of the, um, to eliminate the, um, library board. And also, because civil service and LEF are not appointed by council, I don't know that it needs to be in there for your council-appointed boards and commissions. So those are some of the highlights. Um, and then we can, you have a red line version that was included in the, um, packet, and, um, I'd be happy to go through that, and we'd like some more feedback and see what you all think of it. Um, cup upcoming, we've got the Board and Commission Part Two, where we're going to discuss terms of service, um, term limits on board and the commissions, roles and responsibilities, um, what we want to do if, if council would like to see additional boards and commissions. And then we've got the engagement strategies, um, that we'll discuss in the first quarter of 2024. So, um, with that, I'm open to any feedback that you'd like to provide. I'm especially interested, for my part, uh, on the order of the agenda and what you all think of that.
This isn't related to that at all, so sorry, Laura.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
I, I, looking through, I, there have been one or two interesting blips in the news from other cities, um, about the conduct of board and commission members. And I wonder if under cause for dismissal, we could include violating a code of conduct and be clear that, you know, I don't want to give any weird examples, but when people say horrible things in a public meeting, we should have recourse in our protocol manual to say, you can't say that as a member of this border commission. That, you know, that's, there's no place for that in Bothell, on a border commission. Um, so I just noticed the cause for dismissal talks about failure to attend meetings, failure to complete the OPMA training, um, and then for using personal email accounts to conduct city business, but there's nothing about if you do something terrible, or say, hate speech, or whatever it is, that you can be dismissed, you know, by, I'm assuming by a vote of the council.
Um, okay. One second.
As Laura, we...
Yeah, I think we can...
I was just going to try and buy you time.
Yeah. No. We can, we can certainly add some of that.
No, I was going to add that I, there is no automatic disqualifier, but that is the intent of the protocols, is that what's in here in terms of rules of conduct, that's then part of the onboarding. That's part of, like, we can point to it during the advertising, so people know upfront, this is what's expected. And then if the council does have to make a decision about, um, removing somebody or reminding anyone, having those conversations, it's always just, like, just, it's why we put things in writing, is to have somewhere to start with. So it's good feedback.
Thank you.
I appreciate Councilmember Dodd bringing that up. Um, and you, and you brought it up in the context of boards and commissions, but I also noticed that there's rules of con, there, well, there are some rules of conduct for boards and commission members, but not for council members. And so I'm wondering, can staff look at what other cities have done for codes of conduct for council members and bring back some proposed language to us?
You can do that.
I would like that. Yeah.
I have a question about the residency requirement. I know some of our boards and commissions, people are eligible if they live in the MUGA, um, up in Snohomish County. Does this change that, or is this only for, they basically have to live in the geographic location that they're eligible in?
Yeah, depending on what the board and commission is, if they could live in the MUGA or the UGA, um, then they would have to stay at least within that.
Okay.
I would anticipate a follow-up item of a code cleanup on this as well. If you look at our city code, it's, there is specific language around residency requirement, requirement at the time of application, and it doesn't, it doesn't make it clear of if that residency requirement has to, to stay in effect. I think the intent, I would interpret the intent is that the answer is yes. Um, but part of putting, we'll start with the protocol manual, and then we'll, we'll clean up the code as well.
In my experience, most times when people leave the city, they move out, they will often resign from their border commission. And I, my understanding is that that hasn't always happened.
I think having it specified in the protocol manual, that, one of the benefits of that is that it remind, it's a reminder to people that that is part of it. I don't know, I don't know that it would be ill-intended by anybody of saying that to not do it. I think people might, you know, think of it as one of this, they're part of a, of an organization, you know, equivalent. But putting it in writing, I do think helps specify the requirement, so that people will be reminded to do that. It's something that we're certainly not going to proactively go out and check people's mailboxes. So it's helpful to have people be able to report it to us.
Speaking of things that you might not want to actually check, um, on page 35, there is some pretty clear... Turn yours off. Um, thank you.
Sorry.
Some pretty clear district measurements of how large signs can be that are brought in by the public. And I can tell you that no one is measuring signs, and also there, I haven't seen any enforcement on that. Um, so do we need to, do we need to keep the 11 by 17 limit on signs in the protocol manual, is my question to my colleagues?
Well, yeah.
We'll provide some follow-up information on that.
I, I was going to pick on Councilmember Neal. Have you seen people bring signs? That hasn't happened in my time yet.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I thought probably there'd been some hot topics.
Yeah, there's been some signs.
Okay.
Yeah, there's...
Were they 11 by 17? Okay.
In my tenure here.
They were big, they were small, they were all sizes. Yes.
Thank you.
That's a big size.
They have red fish on them?
Yeah. Don't want to get rid of the red fish.
In my tenure here, we have actually had to ask somebody to remove, move their signs on to the, into the lobby. So it has happened.
I did see signs in the lobby.
Oh, so you have enforced the 11 by 17?
Yeah.
In a gentle and loving way.
As we would expect.
Which is why we haven't seen them.
Could, could I propose a larger sign limit?
We'll provide some more information.
Okay, thank you.
Were you done, Jenny? I don't want to, if she was still have...
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I had a, a question. I think I'm on page 18. There is a strike through, um, council members participating in policy discussions and regional meetings will represent, since it's the council, and it struck that except where regional appointments require regional opinion.
Yeah, the reason that's highlighted is because, um, we were a little bit unclear as to what that meant. Um, and so I wasn't sure if it needed to be in there. I talked to our city attorney, Eileen, and we weren't really sure what the intent of was that. We weren't sure if council served in their capacity and serving on outside and regional boards, do they ever, um, like, offer their, you know, does their opinions on those boards go to the state? I guess we, there was some confusion on that, and that's why that's flagged in yellow, because we weren't sure what the intent was of that.
So serving on several regional committees, um, if you're appointed, like, as an example by SCA to be on a committee or a board or something like that, you're representing the region in that capacity. You're a voice at the table for Bothell as an example, but holistically, you're supposed to take a regional approach. Um, that's the whole purpose of it. So...
Okay.
We do want to make sure that Bothell's voice is heard, which we always do. Uh, but at the same time, when you're on a regional policy committee, setting regional policy, you're there to represent the region, not just the city of Bothell.
Okay. So that, yeah, I will leave that in there. Thank you for that.
Good catch, Councilmember.
Something. The, uh, page 17, and, uh, you have, um, bullet, um, point B, oh, man, I need my glasses. But you have citizens crossed out, and you have residents for council member, uh, in their capacity as private, s- citizens crossed out, residents. But then citizens wasn't changed in any other place. Was there a reason for that? Does that make sense? There's like, I did account just now, there's like eight places where the word citizen...
Is there? Because I did a, a find and replace, and I...
Oh, yeah. So there's like...
Yeah, I will change that throughout.
As a matter of fact, in this particular case, you cannot be on city council unless you're a citizen, right?
Right, unless you're a citizen.
Like, this is probably the only case where the, the, the word citizen applies, and then everywhere else, uh, resident.
Okay. I will do a search and, uh, find and replace for that.
You probably didn't capitalize it. I'm guessing it's a case-sensitive thing.
That might be.
Usually searches aren't that, but, yeah. But that's it. Thank you.
On, um, on page 11, um, the, uh, there are qualifications for the mayor and deputy mayor elections. Um, that's a segment that was added the meeting before this council took office. Um, I'd like that to be completely removed. Um, I, I think it would be incredibly presumptuous of me to assume that the next council who takes office in January should make that vote how this council wants them to. Um, they owe that vote to the community that elected them, not to us.
I will also just add that as an incoming council member, um, I, I did not have a say in these, uh, qualifications or criteria, um, and I did not appreciate a previous council, an outgoing previous council telling me, um, how they thought I should vote. So I, too, would like to see this stricken.
What pages are they?
Page 11.
And so what, what part are, are you two have concern with? I'm, I'm just trying to read through this. And is it in section A?
Yeah.
Or B?
No, it's in section A, the second half.
Starting with, at the December 14th, 2021 city council meeting, and those, that list of bullet points.
The next council gets to make that decision on who they want to represent them, um, on however they want to do that, because they were given that right by the people who elected them, and they owe that vote to them, not to us.
Oh, I got you. So you're, you want to strike the experience as a council member?
Yeah, all of those. That whole thing.
Knowledge, public service experience, et cetera, et cetera.
Not that any of those are bad things. I just think that it's presumptuous of us to, um, try to tell other people how they should make decisions that they've been elected to make.
I understand.
Um, another one on, I guess, on page 15, um, it's speaking about boards and, um, meetings with, of boards and commissions with council twice annually. Um, and that, I think, was a new suggestion, and I'm wondering if, is this being implemented, and then how? And like, when we, when we could expect that to be happening? Because I don't think we've been seeing that in the, in the recent past.
It has not been happening.
Yeah.
It is, it, it was, um, yeah, we, it was a goal. Uh, it hasn't happened, but, um, we're certainly amiable to having it happen. Um, and so I, I think I changed up to twice annually, because it hasn't happened yet. So...
I, I would love to...
You're trying.
I know we're, we're updating the manual. I would love to see us do that, though, even if it's a, a noticed public meeting, but it's informal. It's just, let's have a conversation, you know, seven and seven, or however the, how many people are on the board. I think it's really important, just for board and commission members to feel like we're available to them. Um, I think when I was on the planning commission, some council members would reach out proactively and some wouldn't, and, and you just don't know. I think there's also sometimes a disconnect. I often tell the story of being just a regular old, you know, no position in any city, anything, Amanda, and thinking that council members were this, like, super adult, like, next level type of grown-up that I didn't want to bother. And obviously, that's not true. Please bother us as much as you want. But some people still have that leap, so giving more of a chance, I think, would be great.
Yeah, and I think going forward, we'll schedule those in, in like, in like yearly calendar, so that they're, you know, and they don't get kind of pushed aside with other priorities.
And are we going to be discussing boards and commissions in November? Okay. Because I have a whole lot of thoughts about those that are probably better for that discussion than this one.
And maybe, yeah, go ahead.
Mine's long. Go ahead.
Well, I just have a question, but I actually think that it may be one that could come up in November, too, depending on when we bring this back for adoption. Um, because there's really three concepts in that section about reports to council. There's meeting in joint sessions up to twice annually. If you do the math on what that looks like, we wouldn't do anything else. So I think that was maybe a little too aspirational. And so there's, there's the up to twice annually, but the other option there is having board and commissions present updates to council. Um, that seems like that could be accomplished twice annually. Every six months, uh, we would, and we could set a schedule when boards and commissions come. Um, and then there's the concept of boards and commissions developing a work plan. I think the intent there is, or what I would presume it would be, is, again, boards and commissions are advisory to the council, so they should, they should be doing work that you want to commission them to do. And so the, the work plans conversation would be that validation step of, we think this is what council wants us to do. So again, that could be one of the two updates a year. But I just want to clarify in terms of, in it, but I do think we can hold that till November. If the, if the concept is to have, well, it says May now, and up to, but if you really want to have that high of a frequency of joint meetings, um, that puts alarm bells off in my head in terms of, we're going to have to figure out a different way to schedule.
So what I would like to see in boards and commissions is for us to be more involved in their actual work plan. So maybe there is a meeting where we have a couple different study sessions, where we go through a couple different boards and commissions. And, uh, the one thing that I think at least was missing from my board experience is that there wasn't really an opportunity as much for me to bring things to the table and an agenda to talk about. And we've got really talented board and commission members, and I would love to have their ideas come forward and for us to be able to have a conversation and, guide their work plan that way along with them. And, um, and then maybe the second time they come is an update, like, here's what we're doing. But like, so I don't know if that would need to be in the protocol manual if we do that, like, but I would like to treat boards and commissions like we treat the planning commission, like, because we have a lot of, uh, I mean, a, a lot more interaction with the planning commission than we, anybody else. We approve their docket, like, we, we go through the whole thing. So I, I would, like, if, if we're going to have boards and commissions and we're going to ask people to do this, I, I really, I think we should do it right. And we should really give them a voice, um, because I don't, I don't know that that's always happening right now.
And please record the meetings and put them on YouTube, so I can watch them. I, I do that with planning commission meetings. And some of the, even when we were prepping for some of the shoreline stuff, some of those are on YouTube as well. I think if we're having people give up their time and service to the city, we should, we should have that available, so that we can, you know, check it out. I realize we get summaries, and the summaries are very good, but sometimes watching that discussion is really helpful, too. Or maybe I'm just a nerd. You never know.
So I want to, I want to go back to, uh, 11. I had some time to, to think through that. Um, and I think one of the conversations that we have, um, with a lot of the decisions that we make here is about being inclusive and ensuring that we're looking at things through, through a DEI lens. And I, I'm noticing some things that are in this section A, um, that I'm hoping we don't want to just strike or remove completely, because it lends itself to inclusiveness and looking at things through a DEI lens. So hopefully, we can have more of a discussion. The bullets may be changed in, in the way they're worded, um, but there's some things in here that are intentional, uh, about making su- sure that we're looking at things inclusiveness. And, and I personally don't want to be part of something that doesn't ensure that future councils are being inclusive for all members of the community. So I just, hopefully, we can have more of a robust discussion around that. Um, and then my next one is on page 22. Um, we added a complete section that says, one of the exceptions to this broad provision is the ability for the city council to take action. When I read through that, I'd just like to understand the intent of that, because it does say city council members as in, and I read that is potentially could be as individuals can take positions on things. Um, are we taking positions as individual council members? Is that worded in a way that it could be that I could go out and say how I feel about something personally, when it's not the position of the council? I, I just want to make sure I clarify how that's, that, that's worded.
Um, Callie, do you want to take that, or do you want? I mean, I think that you always have the abilities, the ability to speak as an individual, but...
There's a little gray area there.
And I think in the beginning of the, like, in section two, there's a reference about having one voice as a council. I want to make sure I'm catching the language that you're referring to, Councilmember McNeil. Is it on page 21? Is that what you said?
I'm sorry, page 20, top of page 22.
Page 22.
And, and it, and it says, to do so, yeah, to do so, the city must provide council members. Like, I take that as a, as an individual and members
Okay.
of the community, the public. I take that as saying that, okay, I'm elected, we make a decision.
I understand.
But I must have my right as a council member to also be able to voice my pro or, you know, oppose something.
Yeah.
As an individual, that is, to me, directly conflicting with what
Gotcha.
we're supposed, we, we take a position on something as body.
Think we can take another crack at that language. I think the intention of that, again, I didn't write it, but I think the intention of that from our conversation, the, when this did come up this summer, is that there is a state law provision of saying that if you are going to spend time in a public meeting, that the pro and con sides have to be equal. And one of the things that we had suggested in that process was then the total amount of time discussed for both sides, if we open it up to the public, like, let's say the council was interested in saying something, and then the, we had five residents come, or five individuals come to speak on it, wanting to be careful about not having like a two-hour conversation, all in support of an issue, if five people showed up to say, no, and we only gave them three minutes. I think that's kind of the intent, but there's probably a better way to say that. So I understand your concern, I think we can, we'll work with the city attorney and see if we can describe that better, or point out the requirement of the RCW is clear, so that's a good flag.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I think about it in the context of if the council makes a decision, and then I, as a council member, go and say something publicly, this says that I, I should have the right to do that. I mean, that's how I read it, but it could, I could be wrong, but that's how I read it.
We want to, yeah.
Yeah, and then, so, so this also says that we can't, we, we would be able to take, the council would be able to take a, a position on resolutions. Am I reading that correctly?
It would be if you wanted to adopt a resolution expressing support. So do you have the option, the council, what does have the option if you ever want to take a position on something of either just doing it through a motion of saying, a, a simple statement, or if you want whereas clauses, and having a little more formality of specifics of what the council's intent is, that you could do a resolution. So it would be if the council wanted to take up, taking a position on an issue, that it gives, it's being specific about approving a motion or a resolution, I think. But now I'm probably stepping on your toes.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, and so in that, in that particular case, then, if the council takes a position on a resolution that's offensive, I, I guess I'm, I, I understand the intent, but trying to look at this through the lens of the entire community, people look at things differently, and so do we open ourselves up for taking positions on specific things that, I, I don't know, I, I, I kind of understand what I'm trying to say here, and hopefully, you're, you're kind of feeling what I'm trying to say, but if we take a position on one thing, it may mean one, one thing to one group, but something to, to different to another group. But then it might say to another group that, well, they took a position on this, so now we want them to take a position. If they don't take a position, then they're not supporting that. I, I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that I, I, I think through that.
The, the page break may be getting in the way of this a little bit, too. The section does read for local ballot measures, which could be the modifier, but we might need to strengthen that language throughout, because again, I, language matters, so I think it's a good flag. If you're looking at this and you're seeing, that's not the intent, but it could open up an unintended consequence, we can, we can take a look at.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's wrong or bad.
Right.
I'm, I'm just saying, as I read it, I read some, some questions in my mind, that's all.
Well, I agree. I, I read local ballot measures, but your point is extremely valid, we need to tighten that language, just in case we're not going to be here forever. We assume their best intentions, but you never know what happens in the future. So, yeah, that's a, that's a very good call out, I think.
Okay. I'd like to go back to what Councilmember McNeil said about DEI goals and inclusivity from page 11. And, and I think that that type of value that, you know, we want to see in the conduct of our council members, really could lend itself really well to a, a code of conduct for council members, rather than directing people to vote for mayor according to certain values, just having a, a list of conduct and values that we, you know, the, the standard that we hold ourselves to as a council and a code of conduct that might lend itself better in that, that location.
I would love to see what other cities have on how they elect a mayor. I do think that a five-two vote with three of the, the pro votes being people who are leaving office shortly after is, is icky, but sometimes you can do things for the right reason, even if, even if it doesn't look great. So I don't want to discount it right off the bat, but I want to see where we are with other cities. I think that some of the principles are very good. I also think that the seven, the seven members of a city council are elected for a reason, and you, once you're done, you don't get to choose what happens after you. That's sort of a basic tenet of leaving office. So I would love to just learn more about what other cities do before we decide on that.
Good.
I'd like to raise the, the amount of time that our mayors are mayors. I think we should have a discussion on that, because I think it's, by allowing certain people in a position to, to hold that seat as a mayor or deputy mayor for longer terms, four, six, eight years, is not inclusive. It doesn't give other people opportunities, right? So Shoreline does a really good job with that, they change over quite a bit. So as you're looking into other cities and what they do, how they elect, maybe we can look into what they do around changing who has that opportunity, because it's all about opportunity. That's an inclusive thing, opportunity.
So like term limits for those two, two things? Term limits, quote unquote?
Yeah.
Opportunities for other members of council to have, you know, have the opportunity.
I love to, oh, sorry. I, I, I like that a lot. I also would want to see it for, when we appoint people to regional boards and commissions, same thing, make sure to spread opportunities around, you know? Let's say I do all the transportation stuff for two years, maybe I need to focus on something else and give someone else a chance. So I think that building in, I also think, let's say no one else wants to do K4C, and I want to do it again, and I don't think that should be a barrier either. Let's say no one but Mason wants to be mayor for the next 12 years. I'm just making something ridiculous up, but, you know, then he can have it, right? So it, it should be like a, like a best practice, not like a you can't do it again, I guess is kind of my thinking.
I think we should avoid trying to bind the vote of any future council. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, the only, I mean, the council can take a vote of four.
I'm, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that? Because I
I don't want to add anything in here that presumes to bind the vote of a future council. Like, I think that should be just a hard stop no for us, even if they are good things. I don't think that's our job, because ultimately, that future council, this is just a guide. They can take a vote, and four of them can change the protocol manual at any point in time. So it's not actually going to do anything. In, in fact, usually, it's just a political tool, so people can say, hey, they violated the protocol manual, to the people in the community that don't understand what that means. So I, I, I think that any attempt to bind the future vote of a future council member that earned that vote and is only, only owes it to the community, is something we should completely stay away from.
I'd just tag on to that. I, I, I'm glad you made those comments, but I think that it's not binding, because the protocol manual is not binding, right? So this is what we speak to, what means something to us today, right? In a future council, when the council comes in, they can change the protocol manual day one if they want. They have that right. But what we're saying is what's important to us. And so if it's not important for us to set terms, or not important for us to look at DEI or inclusiveness, or ensuring that we're setting the policy for us today, okay, but in my book, we should do what's right for us today, they can change it tomorrow if they want. I can tell you that, having served eight years, I don't look at the protocol manual as something political, I look at it as, as a guide on how I should act as a council member. And if part of that guide is to say, I need to be inclusive, I want to act inclusive. If part of that guide is to say, I've got term, I want to vote in term. So this is, this is my, my bible, this is what I go off of when I sit in council. So I think it is important for our council to look at this as our guide, and not, not the future council's guide, because, again, they can come in day one and change whatever they want to change.
One is, one topic that we haven't brought up yet is on page 23 for the Bothell Bridge. I have so much idea why this might be proposed to be struck completely, but I would request that there are, thank, hi Becky. That just because we're no longer printing a full version of the Bothell Bridge, that there are other opportunities for council members to, to, you know, write, speak to the community, and so I wouldn't want to see it go away completely, just maybe not in the Bothell Bridge, maybe just on the website, and keep the kind of cadence and routine of that, but put, like, it's already, it already gets linked on the website as like an article anyway, so like, can we keep it there instead of in a printed material?
Sure, we would be happy to kind of reimagine what that looks like. In the past, there was a schedule, and every quarter, a council member was assigned, you know, that timeframe to write an article and speak to the community. It didn't always work, not all council members in the past were always as interested in doing it, and so I, I think it's something we'd love to, to hear more feedback from all of you about, and how we can showcase and give you a platform when you have some things to say to the community.
And I think, yeah, the, one of the values of, that's in the, the current statement, too, is finding that platform consistently, right? If we want to create consistent opportunity and have it not also, like, it's got to fit within, in resources, so, and if the state of desire was great, we have seven days of the week, and there's seven of us, so we each want to publish something weekly, we probably say that's, that is, that is balanced, but probably not doable. So, yeah, I think something about, built around that cadence and making sure that we're providing equal access, absolutely.
And just because it's somebody's turn doesn't mean they have to take it. Like, and I, I kind of doubt that anybody in the community is paying close enough attention to say, oh, hey, I noticed that Councilmember Aldrich missed the turn, but I don't know. Right? Maybe they should probably run for office. But, yeah, I, I do think that having the opportunity is not the same thing as having a requirement, right? Like, the option could be there, but no council member would be required to participate.
I'm pretty sure I missed my turn in 2020 when I was asked to do it, because like, we were busy. I was tired. There were metaphorical fireballs everywhere.
Is, I know, I've noticed we've picked up our social media updating. Could that be some sort of pseudo-replacement for the Bothell Bridge or something?
Absolutely. I mean, I think the way that people consume information is just different, and I think the council corner was a, a full page, you know, article in a printed mailer that went out, but there are lots of different ways we could share that information. It could be a shorter blurb in a mailer that links back to the website, it could be a profile or your messaging on social media, it could be a next door post, it could be lots of different things. The tools could vary, but I think the bottom line is just all of you letting us know how and like, how and when and how you would like to communicate with your public.
Well, that's a great segue into the next one that I have, which is, I think we talked about the signs 11 by 17, Councilmember Aldrich, I think is going to mention maybe increasing the sign, or we're going to talk about it later, but in that same pa- on that same page, there's something that grew up, that gives me great pause, and that is limiting our communication with the community. So we have a specific time limit, right? It says three minutes that you can speak, but we have just struck unless the council grants further time. And that gives, gives me pause, because I remember a time in which I came to speak to this council, and three minutes was not enough. And it, you, sometimes when you're standing in the audience, you need more time. And so for a member of the community that is speaking upon something like a park, or something that's important within the community, I think the council should have the ability to still allow our community to speak to us. So that gives me great pause that we're pulling something out, giving our community a chance to speak to us, when we all know that they don't come often, but when they do come, it's important. So I would just point that out, that that, that gives me a little pause.
It's a helpful flag, and I'd say, too, I've had experiences also when, like, a community member needs translation services, and so you're really, like, having some clarity around that there's some flexibility in the parameters for that purpose, too, I think is important. So we'll take a look at that.
I mean, that's why, what, except when council agrees to, that was a helpful flag. Another thing I noticed in other cities, they have different ones for public hearings. There's three minutes for visitor comment, and then public hearings are actually five minutes. Like, if something is chunky enough to require a discussion and maybe providing that opportunity. It's all ideas, Laura, adding more work to you.
Yeah, no, I, there are other cities that give five minutes for public here. I mean, that's, you know, this is the council's protocol manual, we can make it what you all would like it to be.
What is the convention around in the region, you know, or is there no convention? Each city just does random stuff?
I think there's, we can bring some better analysis of specifics of who does what. I do think that as a general rule, you're going to see practices that involve either a set amount of time, whatever that length would be. Sometimes there's scalability of that time, of depending on how many people sign up. Yeah, my last city that I worked for, we had public hearings that would have like 98 people sign up. So the amount of time that was allocated per speaker was different in those cases than if four people showed up. So there was some discretion that the mayor was given to run, to, to suggest to the council, I would propose this. You see something similar regionally with sound transit, public comment, I've seen them do that, of saying that our normal is this, and they've actually, I've seen them change it mid-meeting. So there's some different options that we can bring, we can look at that.
That's the thing, there's flexibility, because I, I know, I was the, at the state level also, they do something. Everybody gets two minutes, when Rami's turn comes, you cut it in half. That's how it works usually, so. But, yeah, I, I think flexibility, giving us often, because to your point, if you want to talk about inclusion, and if somebody requires assistance, then providing more time might be something that the council will say yes for this person, perhaps, you need, they need more than the three minutes.
But you think, one, one of the things that you'll see is the effect of when it changes, when it gets shorter, I think that does put a lot of pressure on people, and depending on communication style and native language, that can be a real, that can be a real disruptor. And so, you know, again, that's just a factor to consider, I think, as you think about what flexibility means, and, and making sure that everybody gets the, a proportional opportunity is, is good. But we'll, we'll look and see what some of the different options are, and see if, when we lay that out, if anything looks better than others.
Wanted to bring up the seating arrangement. The words individual was struck, and then it says majority of council, and it feels to me different than what I remember of seating arrangement based on seats. And it feels to me that this could become, this could be used as a tool to sit certain people with other certain people, and so just want to have a conversation around, how does, how do we really want that to, to feel as a council? Do we want it, do we want to have people grouped, or it to be a perception of grouping people based on political or whatever, or do we want it to just be a Or do we want it to just be a, a general flow to where you come in and seat two, you sit in seat two, seat three, seat four, not based on who wants to sit next to whom? Just want to have a conversation around that. Take the, take the angst, I guess, in other words, out of that a little bit. Not that you got to change anything. I'm, I'm just bringing it up, that's all. Page thirty-eight. And the word individual struck, a majority was, was put in, but again, it's the whole thing in context, not just what was struck or added. It's just in general.
I think the word individual is super vague, like, because what does it mean? Does it mean that any one council member can say, no, we're not going to change the seating arrangement? Or does it mean any one council member can change where they want to sit? Like, I, I don't, I don't see the specificity in that. Like, it's really unclear what it means to me.
I'd agree.
So I, I, I like the change because honestly, a majority of council members can change the protocol manual too.
And it gives you clear direction, it gives the mayor clear direction to say, I need a majority of council members. I, I know what number I need to make this change. Because as far as I understand right now, it's entirely up to the mayor's discretion to set the seating arrangement. And I think this is saying.
I, I was going to say, I think honestly, it should just be up to the mayor. I don't, I don't want to think about having like a big chunk of a meeting devoted to debating who sits by who. That sounds horrid. And the mayor is elected by the council. I, I'm comfortable with that power. I think, I don't know. I just, I don't want it to become like a constant topic either.
Yeah, and I think, maybe let me clarify. One person making a decision where everybody sits is one person making a decision. And that person's decision-making might not be the will of everyone on council. So if there's something put in place that just allows it to be free, where everybody's seating based on something, it's not one individual making a decision for the entire council. I'm saying this from a perspective of somebody who feels that a seating arrangement was changed. I'm giving it how I felt when it was changed without being part of the conversation. So that is open to interpretation. If a mayor is making a decision where someone sits, the person who he's making that decision for may not be part of that conversation. Therefore, he's feeling a specific way, or she is feeling a specific way, or they are feeling a specific way about it. That's all I'm merely saying. The language doesn't need to be changed. I'm just telling you how I personally feel about the way the language is written.
So one proposal, like, kind of what I'm hearing is that it could just, a proposed change could be the mayor shall establish seating arrangements for regular council meetings. It, like, we don't necessarily need to get approval from council members. That's one option. Or there is a proposal that the mayor would need to get approval from a majority of council members.
And a majority of council members could override the mayor at any point in time in the normal course of a meeting.
The thing about a majority, a majority of the council can't talk to each other unless we're in a meeting. So then it's like, we're going to have to talk about it during meetings. I don't know. I just, I, there's a lot of different ways to do it. I mean, we could just say it's a free for all. Your plaques are on the, a table in the corner every time and whoever shows up first gets to pick their seat.
Musical chairs.
Yeah.
Well, there was a time when which seating arrangement was based on your seat number. That, that happened. That was here when I was on council. I'm just.
Were it based on position number? Yeah. I've seen a lot of cities do that where it is based on position. So the mayor, deputy mayor sits to the right of the mayor and then the rest are by position number. And we could put it back to that. But it, again, it's, we can, council's protocol manual, so I'm open to whatever you'd like.
I'm just raising it because of how I felt about a situation. So again, we can leave it. I'm just saying, if we want to truly be intentional with what we're doing, let's at least listen to the voices at the table, hear what they're saying. There's a voice at the table saying something. If there's not a better way to do this, not going back to what it was before, not doing what other councils do, and then it's just one person makes the decision, that's the will of this council, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to raise it.
I would once again point out that sometimes seating arrangements are based off of, and, and changes are made based off of the conduct of members of council. And that it maybe isn't, doesn't have to do with, and, and everybody's feelings don't necessarily need to be taken into account when certain members of council's conduct has been egregious enough to the point where somebody feels that they have to make a request for another seating arrangement. And I would like to make sure that that is reflected in our procedure, in our protocol manual. And at this point, when a seating arrangement needs to change, if that can be up to the discretion of the mayor, that, that feels, that feels safest to me. And also another reason why we need a code of conduct for our council members.
I would agree. I would also agree that, once again, my position is that we, if we want to be inclusive, we need to have the discussions. We need to be able to have these discussions. And if we can't have the discussions, we're going to leave it up to the opinion of one person. That's not inclusive. So I, I, I don't, I don't know what you're referring to about seating arrangements, but I think conversations need to be had. And when we don't have the voices that are sitting at the table having a conversation, that to me feels like it's divisive. So.
So I'll just point out two things. The first is that you cannot talk to a quorum of city council members when you are not in a council meeting. So there is no way for the mayor to poll a majority of council members and say, what do we want to do? So what we did this last time is the city manager sent a letter saying, hey, we're going to do a different seating arrangement tonight. And I would love to hear your opinion on it and let's, and use that as the start of a conversation. And that didn't seem to be the start of a conversation in any way, shape or form. But there is just no way for a mayor to please everybody or talk to a quorum of council at any given point in time. And we, we didn't really have the conversation. I don't know if the city manager, did you get any emails after your request for feedback or more conversation about that?
I think I, I suggested to people that we talk about it in a council meeting. I didn't ask for individual feedback and I can, I mean, I'm happy to do that. But again, the, I think to your point of then what do we do with that feedback? So, but yeah, I think we, we were having, I think the discussion then had, started happening in public. But I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
I was just curious.
I'm happy to collect feedback.
We had this conversation a while, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, no, I, so certainly have talked to individual council members, but not with the intent of then saying, let me, let me take a crack at it or anything.
I was, I was going to say, I think there's, this is really highlighting a lot of the challenges of the fact that we all have this part-time job in common. And unlike any workplace I've been in, I think staff can say maybe not so much, but we can't talk about how we do the job when we're not in a recorded public meeting. So when there is conflict, when there is a situation that might lead a council member to request that the mayor rearrange the seating because of something that happens, but they're not comfortable saying that in the open public meeting because it's a personal matter, it's a, whatever it is, then we have a situation like this. So it does take a bit of a, a, a level of faith in the people that we serve with to understand that while an action might not be explainable in this setting, there is likely a reason that something changed. And that is part of why I think I'm comfortable with saying, if we pick a mayor, the mayor can do that. People can go to the mayor with concerns. And I just, I, if we make it so that any changes have to be part of this open public meeting, we lose the chance for people to have conflicts that they can't air publicly as part of that discussion. So I, I realize that sometimes when you're part of an organization or a team and you don't have all the details, it can be frustrating. It can be easy to think something I did or something someone's doing to me. And just because of where people are comfortable talking about what happened, it may not be that you ever get those details. So this really highlights, I think, a challenge of having this specific part-time job. And I'm not sure how to solve it, but I don't ever want anyone to feel like they can't get support because they're not comfortable yet sharing something that happened to them in a public forum.
Well, thank you for sharing your comments. But are we right making it right for one and making it wrong for another? I guess that's the question. This is a very difficult discussion to have. You sit around a table and you're going to offend people sometimes. You're going to make conversations. You're going to make, have discussions. You're going to make decisions that are going to offend people. And part of me bringing this up tonight is to have that tough conversation. Because if we want to be intentional with being inclusive, we need to be inclusive for everyone sitting at the table and not just make a decision and expect somebody to expect it or accept it. Because that's being divisive, right? So as an example, if we're putting this person's feelings or what is matters to them over another person, that's divisive. That means this person is more important than that person. So we have to make sure that we have a conversation or have the opportunity to have a conversation on the decisions that we make and how they long-term will affect people. So as an example, if we go back to the seating arrangement that's two, four, six, or whatever it is, that's not divisive because it's just based on a seat number. Nobody can say, oh, I want to sit there. I want to sit here. If there's a problem amongst that, when it happens and someone needs to move, there's a discussion that has to be had. That's all I'm saying. I'm saying there's, to me, this feels like there's no opportunity for that. And one person might feel uncomfortable, which one did. I raised my, how I felt about something. We moved because of another situation, which I was not party to, but it made me feel a certain way after that decision was made. And that is what I'm saying. I'm using my voice at the table to say how I felt about something. That's it. So I don't, I don't want any other council member to feel any negative towards this. This is how I feel. And I will use my voice. I will use my voice.
I'm glad Councilmember Neil got a chance to talk about his feelings tonight. I'm comfortable with the way this is written right now.
Are you, are you comfortable with the majority of council members that you would need approval for seating arrangements to change?
I mean, that means it can never happen outside of a public meeting, so no.
So.
I would say, so I guess you're right. I'd say strike the with a majority because honestly, the with a majority is sort of assumed because if a majority of council disagrees with what the mayor does, they can just make a motion and change it.
So it would read the mayor shall establish seating arrangements and just get rid of all that? Okay.
And sometimes that means the mayor gets to be the lightning rod for things that we don't want out in public. And I'm comfortable with that.
And if a member of council has a problem with the change in the seating arrangement, they can take it up with the mayor outside of a public meeting.
It's true. We've all got each other's council members.
So just for clarity purposes right now, this is divisive. The two-way conversation right there is divisive, just so you know. I want to make, I'm going to go on public record saying that's divisive.
Are there any other comments on the protocol manual? I don't think so. Oh?
I was just going to say, do you have everything you need for your next visit?
Bring it back for approval.
Yeah, I think so.
Bring it back. I, I, I think we need to bring it back just to make sure everybody's okay with it before we bring it back for approval.
There's some, there's some changes that are purely technical in nature that approval is easy. I think there's other things that are going to, again, with everything, there's an opportunity for discussion. But I think there's some others that we might have to do some homework and be clear about options or present something more than just a draft. So we'll, we'll take a look at how that best moves forward.
Perfect.
Ken, I actually have a question about the protocol manual. I apologize. Can you point me to the page about study sessions, please?
Point you to the page?
Yeah, I don't know where study, like, I, where, where would I find study sessions? Does somebody have a search function?
Page thirty-eight.
Page thirty-eight. Thank you. So is there, is there, well, that, because we're changing the order of business, I understand why the, the changes have been made here. But, oh, oh, so I guess it's page thirty-seven. Thirty-seven is describing kind of how study sessions are conducted. And my understanding is that they're conducted to be conversations, correct? That there is, can be an open exchange of information and ideas with council members. And, and so I don't, I'd just like to know that that, maybe if it's not reflected in this, in the protocol manual, that it should be, because my understanding is, is how I described a study session would be conducted. And so when we conduct a study session, I expect that there would be conversation. And, and if that's not clearly outlined in the bottom of page thirty-seven, number twelve, could we, could we communicate what the, the style of discourse is intended to be?
So on page thirty-seven, we've got study sessions as part of, you know, the regular meeting. You, you just want more language in there about, yeah, we moved this over to there.
Well, and because our, the format of our study sessions has changed. And that came out of, out of our retreat and our priority setting that we talked about how we didn't need it to be quite so formal up on the dais where, you know, everybody needed to be waited to be called on by the mayor and, you know, the, all of those formal kind of procedures that we have in place. My understanding is the study session, we gather here around the table for conversation. Yeah. So I'd, I'd love to see that, that change that we've done over the last year reflected in the protocol manual. Thank you.
All right. I think we're good. Thank you very much. And we have, next up is council conversations. All right. Council will adjourn to closed session to discuss labor negotiations pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one forty-four A. Anticipated to last thirty minutes with no action. Council will adjourn from there.